Started with our April 22 workshop. Just a couple of things out of the box here. Commissioner Peters had a family emergency out of town, so she will not be here this morning. And certainly, our thoughts and prayers are with her and her family. And she is certainly hoping to be back in time for our Tuesday board meeting. And Commissioner Seal had a doctor's appointment that came up for her. They had to reschedule some things, and she had to get in today. So she's there early morning, and will try to join us here shortly, hopefully sometime mid-morning. But so they'll be with us. And just a momentary point of reflection. This has been a monumental week as far as the hearing in Minnesota and what's gone on up there and the significance. There's a lot of symbolism, a lot of significance, and a lot of true meaning to a lot of people in our country. And I just didn't want the day to go by without us acknowledging the significance of that. But also, just to take a moment to maybe just reflect a little bit on challenges that we have here, clearly everywhere in our country, but here that we can continue working together to elevate conversation, to elevate the work that we have ahead of us. But in any event, I just, just a moment of silence and just reflection on the powerful message of this week. Thank you all. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started. Barry, I'll turn it over to you and we'll take your direction this morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we have all of our special service districts here to present their 2022 budget. But before we get started, just wanted to acknowledge the partnership that many of them have stepped forward in helping this past year during this pandemic, whether it's the libraries helping with getting people connected, you know, with especially the community service district. Erica's certainly had challenges with setting up sites and things like that. So everybody's played a role in trying to respond to the pandemic and wanted to acknowledge that before we get started. So thank you. But first up, we have the Pinellas Public Library Cooperative, and Cheryl will be here to talk about her 22 budget.
Good morning, Cheryl. Welcome. Good to have you here.
Good morning. Thank you very much.
You can remove that. That'd be fine.
It's not on.
Hold on. Somebody's coming.
Okay. Oh, much better. It was the mask. It's so nice to see all of you in person this year as opposed to last year's Zoom presentation. And it's very nice to meet Commissioner Flowers for the first time. I'm so glad that you're here. And I think that County Administrator Burton covered pretty much what I wanted to say, so I think I might be done. I'm kidding. It has been a very trying year for everybody, especially all of you. And through this year, we have developed so much stronger partnerships and bonds with all the county departments that are helping our residents get through this year. So I want to talk about the good things that have happened over the past year. The COVID response from PPLC and the member libraries has been nothing short of phenomenal. I'll get into it a little bit more, but each one of the member libraries had their own very unique situations that they had to grapple with. All the public libraries closed mid-March. Most of them reopened again in June. Some of them did not reopen again until October. And that's pretty good for this part of Florida. And you may not be aware that Hillsborough Libraries didn't open until two weeks ago. So Pinellas County did very well with reopening in June, getting the safety measures in place to protect the staff and to keep the public also protected from each other. So again, revolutionary, and some major new services came out of it, including curbside delivery. Even when the libraries were closed, they were serving the public by bringing books to them that they wanted, books and other items, whatever they wanted. They would bring it to them at their car. They would drive through, pick up their bag, and be along their way. Libraries created virtual classes and events. Zoom Live and Zoom became, you know, a household common word. And we even had libraries that were, because the schools were closed, we had libraries that picked up lunch distribution, partnering with Pinellas County School District to get lunches out to kids that were in need. Some libraries installed drive-through areas where people, their staff could hand things out the window from the building to cars that were driving by, other safety measures, and then constantly revisioning how we serve the public. On the PPLC side of things, that was pretty much the same. We have two countywide services. We have the Talking Book Library for the Blind and the Deaf Literacy Center for the Deaf. And those departments were able to continue their services and then some. The Deaf Literacy Center, because they went online with their services, were getting, trying to think of the word, participation from all corners of the state of Florida and other states, because Pinellas County is very lucky to have this service for their deaf community. And Tampa Bay has one of the largest deaf communities in the country. So it's a win-win situation. Everyone did very well. With the Talking Book Library service to the blind, there are only nine locations in the state of Florida. One of them is the hub or the central location in Daytona Beach. Most of them were closed for three months, four months. The Daytona branch, which is the state's center for Talking Book Library distribution, closed three times during the pandemic, because they closed at first because they thought everyone was closing, then they closed again because they had infection in their building, and then they closed again for the same reason a second time. The PPLC Deaf Talking Book Library didn't close at all, not once. And in fact, were able to pick up the needs of the residents throughout the rest of the state, because all of the requests are handled online. So instead of sending out 600 books on a flash drive a day, they were sending out 2,000 a day and hitting all the counties who had closed their Talking Book Libraries. Aside from the pandemic and all of the wonderful responses that the libraries were able to do and PPLC was able to do, working with the county and developing new partnerships and new services, the PPLC administrative team and the Board of Directors developed a new strategic plan for 2021 to 2025. Last year, we also celebrated our 30-year anniversary. It was a very small, quiet celebration. There was no cake or anything. I think that it was just mentioned at one of the board meetings that, oh, this is our 30 years of serving Pinellas County. I want to point out, and I don't have a slide for it, but I'm hoping that if you have a copy of the PPLC long-range plan to look at your leisure, I just wanted to point out in our action plan, our number-one goal is to target unincorporated residents of Pinellas County and let them know that they can have a free PPLC library card. I have a video that we created recently, and we'll show that at the end after I answer any questions that you might have. But I think when I arrived here six years ago, I just assumed that because PPLC had been in place for 25 years, everyone in unincorporated Pinellas County already knew that they were eligible for a free library card. So over the past six years, I have learned, we have learned together, the Board and I have learned, that that is not true at all. And I have talked to personally hundreds of people through my daily work, through meeting people on the street, meeting people in the grocery store, and it became very aware to me that they did not realize, the majority of people did not realize, that they could have a free library card. We have partnered with Pinellas County at the Lealman Exchange to have a little library presence there, and that has been working out really well. And I hope when Chris Moore talks a bit later, he'll mention that, that we are working together to educate people that they can go into any library and get a library card. But if they can't get into a library, the Lealman Exchange Computer Lab acts as a satellite service for library databases that are online that they can use there. And we had a special card made for them and everything, and that slide is at the very Other goals, like I said, our first goal is to provide unique services to residents of unincorporated Pinellas County. Continue with the deaf and hard-of-hearing, the blind and print-disabled services that we have, that PPLC has provided countywide, no matter where the person lives, in a city, unincorporated, Kenneth City, South Pasadena, whether they have a library or have access to a public library or not. If you live in Pinellas County and you're eligible for these services, you are eligible for these services, no matter where you live. We will continue to develop mutually beneficial partnerships. And over the past year, many new partnerships have been forged through the COVID response with county departments to educate the public on COVID, to distribute reemployment applications for people who couldn't get into a library and use the computers when the libraries were closed, and then to help them once the libraries reopened, to help them online with the reemployment applications. The libraries distributed tens of thousands of face masks through the County Department of Health. I mean, phenomenal. And now are still helping people register for their vaccinations, bringing positive vaccine awareness messages, helping the county get the word out that you should get your vaccine, and most recently, providing the rental housing application assistance. So people that are in need of assistance with their rental housing payments can get the help and get their application in online. And again, our most recent partnerships with the Lealman Exchange, working with Forward Pinellas to educate, help educate the entire county on things that matter to the Board of County Commissioners and the rest of the county. County Administrator and I serve together on the Pinellas County Race Equity Leadership Council, which is under the Council for the Healthy St. Petersburg. But leaders in the county and in the community are working very focused, working on race equity, and not just race equity, but equity in when it comes to transportation. And that's what we're working on with Forward Pinellas, getting surveys out to our blind and deaf communities and the rest of the communities through their libraries on the equity survey that they're working on for transportation and other issues. So equity across the board. And we're so happy and appreciative to have you all to work with on those issues. Reimagining library services completely. And sometimes it takes a disaster to realize the value of a service that we might take for granted during a regular time. And this is the Lealman Library Card for the Lealman Exchange. So if you're a Lealman resident and you go into the Lex or the Lealman Exchange, you want to use the computers, you would get a library card, and that will give you access to all of the countywide databases that we have available. And I am so happy to take any questions that you might have. I'm sorry, I do want to say one more thing, because this just happened last night. Normally, I wouldn't make a plea about our budget, even though this is a budget presentation. Last night, the state released their state aid figures, and we are taking a very big hit. Pinellas County, all the counties across the state are taking a big hit. This year's state aid is proposed at $15 million, which is less than half of what it was 10 years ago. So my request is to keep the library cooperative funding level at half a mil. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate that. Any questions? Any comments? Yeah, just one from me. First of all, thank you for what you've done and what Ken, I think the county administrator made comment about the role that libraries have played this past year. Clearly very important outreach, especially as we're trying to connect with our seniors that may or may not have access to computers and may or may not have access to understanding how to make those vaccinations. It was really critical and continues to be. So thank you for that effort. Just one question as it relates to human nature and getting, yes, I wanted to throw that out there, and getting a product that you check out or take out of the libraries back and back in a timely fashion so others can access it. And the whole fine system that has been in place, well, I was going to date myself, but for decades, obviously. And we have moved away from that. Clearly seems to be counterintuitive, but I'm sure that there are rationale. And perhaps maybe you could share a little bit about the rationale for that as it relates to it. And have you seen any unintended consequences of that kind of decision? I mean, it's hurt some budgets, I know that, but that's kind of the end effect. What are some of those unintended things that have happened, and what has been the motivation behind?
I am very happy that you raised the question, and I thank you for that. Pinellas County library directors have been talking about going fine-free, and that's just for overdue materials, for at least five years. And in the scheme of things in the rest of the country, we're pretty late in the game in offering fine-free overdos. That policy has passed the Library Directors Advisory Council. It is an issue that has purview, the Library Directors Advisory Council has purview over their circulation policies and their fine policies. And the committee studied cases throughout the country for a number of years since they've been chatting about it and found only positive results. And I'm going to talk only about Hillsborough County, because they are closest to us, even though they don't resemble a cooperative model. It's a countywide system. They found, and they have, they've produced their study results and presented it at Florida Library Association Conference, that they have found a cost savings, and they have found that people return their items on time. Yes, the word "counterintuitive" is incredibly appropriate, because you wouldn't think that. Well, I don't have a fine. I don't have to bring it back. But the taking away the fines also takes away another F-word, and that's fear. The fear of being punished for keeping something out late. Let's say you have this item. The cost of the item is $10, but you realize that it fell under your sofa, and by the time you got to return it to the library, they're going to charge you a $10 replacement fee because you lost the item. Well, you might as well just keep it at that point. Well, I can't use my library card anymore, but I won't have that fine to pay. It creates, talking about equity, it creates a more equitable condition for families that can't afford to pay for items that fell under the couch and they didn't know where they were, and then they racked up their overdue fines. There are a lot of, a lot of positive results in studies that have been published. So that was why the library directors voted, a majority vote, to continue with their fine-free movement.
Okay. Well, thank you for sharing that. I'd be curious about that study. No other questions? Yes, Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you. I want to thank you for your presentation, huge support of the library system. And when we look at what COVID did, as it relates to especially our senior community and their ability to still be able to connect with the outside world through media resources, I think that's really good. I do want to, I want to share just one concern about doing away with fines for library books and things like that. I agree wholeheartedly with what you said. You know, if the item was only $5, your fine is 10, you might as well keep the product. Now you're having to maybe order more. But when we're looking at those libraries that are not within city municipalities who don't receive some of the same financial support, and I don't have the numbers in front of me right now as it relates to the dollar amount that is collected in unincorporated areas to buy fines, but if we're not going to do that, then we're going to have to, when I say we, I mean the Board, we're going to have to look at another way to provide that revenue to them. I don't think that libraries are set up to be revenue-generating entities. They are set up as a service, and they should be set up as a service. Our children use them, our seniors use them. I still like to go in. There's nothing like opening, I like to smell the pages of a book, you know? I like that. But I do want us to think about that, because we would have to figure out another way to make up for that revenue source if we're going to, well, now that the decision has been made, because the decision was made by that cooperative to do away with those fines and fees. So for those libraries that are in municipalities that have the support, you know, that fills in for them, that's good. But then for our unincorporated areas, we have to figure out something to keep them robust.
Thank you so much for that question. And again, I'm going to quote County Administrator Burton, because about 15 minutes ago, about 15 minutes ago, he talked about the cost associated with handling cash. And that is one issue that I did not talk about. The studies of going fine-free that they're finding, the libraries are finding, that they are spending less money for staff at the front desk to handle money. The money then goes through a system of ending up in the municipality's bank account, and all the people that are involved in that system, or whether you're talking about unincorporated libraries, it still has to go through a system of checks and balances. It's very staff-time intensive. Not only that, we have about half the libraries in the county contracting with a debt collection service that costs thousands of dollars a year. And we did a study in-house on the amount of overdue fines, strictly overdue fines, collected at each one of our member library locations, finding that that is very minimal revenue stream. $2,000, $3,000. It's very small. Some libraries are taking their whole cash intake and thinking that's their overdue fine pot, when the, you know, let's say their overdue fine pot is, they think is $10,000, but if you separate out the lost book fines, which are still going to be in place, the damaged book fines, which are still going to be in place, the money you take in for people using the copy machine, the money you take in for other things at the front desk, that total pot might be $10,000. But the overdue fine section of that pot is about $2,000 to $3,000. So it's minimal. And if, like in Hillsborough County, if a vacancy comes around, a job vacancy, they don't have to fill it, because they don't have that handling cash cumbersome activity that was happening before. So I believe that we will continue to study the effects of this, and if it is determined that it is detrimental to libraries, then they can go back and reevaluate the situation and change it back to the way it was.
Ms. Chair, thank you. I'm sorry. Thank you for clarity on that. If you all are a part of the cooperative, though, it's what the cooperative group votes and decides, not just that the unincorporated libraries would be able to make that decision and go back. What I would be interested in knowing or just finding out is, based on what she just said, I would like to see what the actual numbers are related to how much has been collected in fines for overdue books, not for damaged books or anything like that. And again, I'm just, you know, thinking about the overall budget of how we fund certain things, you know, if it's a revenue generating. So if it's only $2,000 or $3,000, you know, that's small compared to the overall budget. But if it's more than that. And the other thing I want us to be careful about, too, is, you know, when persons come into a library, they're looking for help, they're looking for support and assistance, they're looking for the reading programs. I mean, it's more than just coming to check out a book. But again, something needs to be funded in order to be able to provide those services. So I'm not disagreeing with your report at all. I think it's wonderful, and I love the service that the library provides. But I'm just looking at, you know, the overall service provision, especially for unincorporated areas like Lealman and Commissioner Eggers' district primarily, you know, going North County. So I just like to, I don't have to have it today, but I'd love to see what those actual numbers are for those libraries.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you very much. And if I could just take one more minute to talk about the caveat of the policy, that all libraries in Pinellas County will be fine-free for overdue items. The caveat is that The caveat is that some libraries may choose to continue charging overdue fines. And that freedom has been given.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Long?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. While I don't want to have the conversation this morning because I know we have a long day ahead, I really would like to have somebody, hopefully Bill, hi Bill, keep a list of those presentations and the people that come and talk about the cuts that they have received in their area due to the state budget. Because at the end of the day, when we start finalizing our numbers after we've listened to all these presentations, I would like to know the amount of money that we're talking about that heretofore has come down to help provide opportunities for these different programs. But as long as I've been on the commission, I find that over and over and over again, it's the county commission that's plugging the gap. And at some point, I think we have to take a look at that and see what the total impact is on our budget. It's hard to do when you hear the presentations one at a time. I'm starting a little list, and I'd just like someone to check me, check my numbers at the end. All right? Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Anybody else? Okay, Cheryl, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Okay, Lois from Eastlake Library, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, county commissioners and staff. Thank you for having us this morning. We did do, before I go into my presentation, we did do a study, both Palm Harbor Library and Eastlake Library, taking a look at five years of fines and fees. And we did present that information to members of the PPLC Board and to several county commissioners. We'd be happy to provide that information. And it did indicate, pre-COVID, at least for Eastlake Library, an average of $12,000 a year in overdue fines. And when auto renewal came into effect, which allowed the system to automatically renew items that were not on hold or reserved for another patron, that reduced the overdue fines to approximately $8,000 per year. Then, of course, COVID hit and that changed everything. But we can provide that information to you if you so desire.
Yeah, go ahead and, just go ahead and assume that. Thanks.
Okay. When the first wave of the pandemic hit a year ago, there were serious decisions to be made. We knew that shuttering public libraries puts a strain on communities, even if it's the only way to keep people safe. Because libraries play such a vital role in keeping their patrons educated, connected, and entertained, our staff found ways to keep services going despite being closed to the public. With the help and support of Pinellas County and the funding we received, we realized that COVID actually provided opportunities to change the way we think. In the past year, Eastlake Community Library and its staff have made lemonade out of lemons. And here are some examples. We began providing 24/7 access to library materials by unveiling the first hold-it locker system in Florida. Patrons can request items to be held in an outdoor locker, simply scan their library card to check out their books and audiovisual materials. We are presently averaging among almost 400 items per month, and it's only been available since November. At present, we are also investigating grant opportunities through TBLC to place a second locker system for library materials at the local YMCA. Very popular new service. Another first, a special collection called Gizmos and Gadgets for patrons to check out. Everything from golf range finders to VHS DVD converters, portable scanners, game controllers, air compressors, projectors, and outdoor games. This collection gives patrons the opportunity to borrow items they may need only once or to preview something they might consider buying. Helping the community has always been a priority of any public library. As soon as vaccines became available, we set up a COVID vaccination information station where staff helped residents without internet access, computer skills, or smartphones to register. Many of these were elderly residents who greatly appreciated our time and efforts. The pandemic also created an enormous increase in food insecurity in every community. In response to this need, Eastlake Library created a food pantry right outside our doors that gives anyone access to non-perishable foods, paper products, and personal hygiene items. It has kept stocked with donations from the staff and patrons, something we will continue as long as it is deemed necessary. Outreach and community partnerships also continued this year despite the pandemic. In response to patrons' concerns about coming into the library during the pandemic, the library began planning for a home delivery service. Eastlake now has its very own collection connections with a small army of volunteers working with our staff to bring library materials to our patrons. This can be for those who are permanently or temporarily homebound, as well as residents of the local assisted living facilities. Although many special events were canceled or postponed due to the health crisis, the library was able to work with our community partners with such endeavors as the Rotary Club's Shred-a-Thon, YMCA's Healthy Kids Day, which is this Saturday, Eastlake Fire Rescue's 5K Race, and their clothing drive for clothes to kids. We also continued our partnership with the Haven of RCS with our Giving Tree at Christmas and the School Supplies Drive in August. All these partnerships will continue in the future and hopefully expand. During the health crisis, Eastlake Community Library expanded online services like eBooks and streaming media and added virtual programming. There was a reallocation of some print collection budgets to digital materials, reaching out by phone to those digitally disconnected and offering library card renewals and temporary new cards until the library reopened to give patrons access to all of our online resources. And through all this, we had building issues such as a leaking roof, a lightning strike, a broken air exchanger, and a water leak outside the library. I have to compliment Andrew Pupke and his team who rode in on their white horses to help us with all of the facilities issues and have us on the list for a new roof for this coming year. Thank you. I would be remiss if I did not give a shout-out to my wonderful staff and library support groups who have done a phenomenal job during the past year. I think they went above and beyond during the health crisis to be innovative, resourceful, and resilient. And for that, I am truly grateful. Now, where do we go from here? This past year has been a learning experience for all of us. And much of what we do in response to the pandemic can be incorporated into future services and programming. Technology and the digital divide became quite evident. The library's pivot to virtual programs and digital resources taught us that a new technology plan needs to be developed for our library and community. This will be a priority for the upcoming year with input from local stakeholders and outside professionals. Fortunately, if this year's MSTU proposal is approved, we will start the year with 20 new computers for staff members and the public, which is certainly a step in the right direction. Another interesting output of this was the transforming of outdoor spaces to enhance library services. Project for Public Spaces describes great public places as accessible, clean, attractive, safe, and comfortable places that support activities where people of all ages can meet each other. If a library offers a variety of options and a strong outdoor Wi-Fi signal, diverse groups will use outdoor seating areas for work, meeting, and project work, as well as reading and contemplation. In line with this concept, our library is transforming the side patio into a tech deck this summer, complete with seating, solar-powered charging stations under a covered pavilion. In 2022, we would like to add a raised deck on the north side of the building for our patrons to enjoy for reading, relaxing, or socializing. Since we are the smallest library in Pinellas County, this option will give us more seating and space to spread out and think of the health benefits of being outdoors. As part of the Phase 2 expansion in the next four or five years, we are also in the process of procuring a joint use agreement with Pinellas County School Board for a shared parking lot with Cypress Woods Elementary School. I think I've been talking about this for three years now. But preliminary site plans have already been submitted, and we are hoping to have this in place before the end of the year. Because of the health crisis, our plans to become a passport acceptance facility were put on hold. Now, with the anticipated loss of revenue due to the fine-free policy, it is more important than ever to get back on track with this service. Our goal is to undertake retraining and begin accepting passport applications by October. I understand that COVID has had a tremendous impact on the local economy, and we appreciate the fact that the county continues to support our libraries during these difficult times. We are seeking the same mileage rate for the upcoming fiscal year, and we will strive to continue providing quality services, programs, and resources to our community. I thank you for your support and your time. Okay. Any questions?
That was great. Really informative and obviously always interactive with our residents. You guys just do a great job.
We try.
Yeah, you do. Any questions for Lois? Yes, Commissioner Gerard?
So I didn't realize that you had the option of keeping the fines. Is that something you're contemplating?
Well, it creates a difficult situation for us because the perspective for most patrons is that we are a seamless countywide library system. They don't always fully understand how a cooperative works, okay? I think it would create a very difficult situation if we did impose, if we kept the fines structure the way it is since people coming into the library would not understand that they don't pay a fine at Tarp and Springs Library, but they pay a fine at Eastlake. So what we have tried to do is to look at it, and it also would be extremely time-consuming for our staff simply because of the fact that it is, would no longer be an automatic type of fine added through the integrated library system. We would have to manually do it at the patron level for every single fine. So what Jean and I have discussed, and we have, you know, tried to work through this change, is to protect our special collections. We have certain special collections, the Gizmos and Gadgets, as I just mentioned. We have Ready, Set, Read kindergarten kits, tools for school. And then Jean has, and I'm sure he can, you know, add to this, but he has musical instruments, the STEAM kits that were developed, which are very expensive items, many of them. So what we're trying to do is only impose a fine on the special collections, okay? Which at this point, we're considering something like a dollar a day, up to $10. Our main purpose is, number one, they're very expensive. Number two, we have limited quantities. It's not like a book that you may have 50 copies of it, you know, countywide. So we're trying to get these items back so that they can continue to circulate and get into the hands of others that need it. If there's, you know, nothing to encourage someone to return something, they may keep it out that much longer, especially a $400 or $500 item. So that is the one thing we want to do. I don't want to create a problem for my front desk staff by having to continue fines across the board. It would be, it would be a nightmare, I think, for them and a morale problem.
Any other questions? I'm not seeing any. Got off easy, Lois.
Okay.
Good to see you. Thank you.
Thank you all, and thank you again for everything, and stay safe.
Okay, Jean and/or Erica, who's up next?
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Library Director at Palm Harbor Library. Feel kind of naked out here without my colleague Erica. Usually it's a two-person team, but it's okay. I'll try and go solo this morning. First of all, thank you very much for all your support this past year and all the things you've done over the years. Palm Harbor Library, for those of you who may not know, has been in existence now for 43 years, and we're still going strong. And a lot of it is obviously due to your support. This past year has been, quite frankly, surreal, bizarre, pick the adjective that you want. And many of the things that we've done in Palm Harbor Library echoes what Lois has done so, so well at the Eastlake Library. We've taken, we've been forced to look at things we haven't looked at before, and I think it's good. There's been a lot of problems with COVID, as we all know, but it's really forced us to look at how we do our operations. Is it still working? Is it not? What is it that we can do differently? Should we just leave it alone? And I think that's been really, really good. One of the major impacts we've had, of course, is not having our volunteers. We've always cherished our volunteers, but truly missed them this past year to the extent that we've had to and still are close several hours at the evening because we just don't have enough personnel to keep the building open. Besides the fact that they're just wonderful ambassadors for the library, but we do miss them. They are all part of our family. I think one of the wonderful things about Eastlake and Palm Harbor Library, and I'm being biased when I say this, though, is that we've never became, since we never became a city, where there was more governmental involvement. The volunteers have remained a big part of what we do, so they are truly missed. And hopefully they'll get them back sometime in the fall. But it really forces us to look at a lot of different things. And one of them, and was mentioned by Cheryl earlier, and I believe by Lois, is that, like many libraries, we do offer, we were offering curbside pickup. Well, we looked at what we can possibly do, and with the support of the Fixer Board and so forth, we now offer a drive-through service, which has been wonderful. It really has been. As a matter of fact, I think there's a celebrity among you that even did a wonderful video that shows up on our website every once in a while. So I don't know who that could be, but it was a great-looking car that he was driving in. So thank you very much. We really support that. I appreciate that, and the people really do, too. The past year has also been a time of reflection on where the library is going. It really has forced us to look at that. We're in the process now of developing a brand-new 10-year capital reschedule replacement program. And now with the lease program that we have with the county, thank you very much, we're now able to focus more on what we can do internally and not be as concerned on the outside of the building. Case in point, this past year, the, again, praising Mr. Pupke for what he's done and his team. The county was able to come in and were able to replace one of our air conditioners at no cost to the library. So we do appreciate that very, very much. It really helped us out. Our new 10-year plan, we're looking at up through 2032. We're looking at everything about how we can do onsite, offsite. And at this point right now, we will be providing that shortly to the Fixer Board for their review. We appreciate the fact that you're looking at the possibility of approving an MSTU request for the library that would be completing the result, the balance of the carpeting that we want to do for the adult services area. Probably one of the most fascinating things about that is that they have this machine that actually picks up the whole book range and just moves the whole thing. And it, just then in itself, it's just amazing. But we're hoping that the county will be able to approve that requirement so then we can go ahead and complete doing that. We've been very fortunate also this past year to receive some private funding to allow us to do some programs we normally wouldn't be able to do, with like a brand-new writing program and some facility updates. And also, we were able to host this spacecraft program that came out of Creative Pinellas, which was a wonderful program that the community really enjoyed. One thing I did want to note that is going to be an impact on us, Cheryl had mentioned this too, and Lois regarding the fines. One of our main expenditures, one of our incomes, I should say, one of our annual guaranteed, or formerly annual guaranteed income of fines, which is over $10,000 a year, will be gone effective as of October 1st. The majority of library directors did approve that, but the majority, not all of us. And unfortunately, now, the library has now been forced into looking at some fundraising activities on an annual basis to make up for that loss. $10,000 or so may not seem like a lot. To me, that is a lot. Books, videos, and so forth. We're not just going to sit back and take it. We need to find a way to do it. But at a way that would not be on the backs of our taxpayers. They're paying enough taxes as it is. But we are looking at several fundraisers, and we're going to have to try to create something that will be done on an annual basis. One thing that we're actually planning to do, I don't know how successful it's going to be, but with the support of, approval of the Fixer Board, on November 13th, we're going to have our first, hopefully, annual 12-hour going to have our first, hopefully, annual 12-hour live telethon to raise funds on a 12-hour basis, so we can try to get some money to replace that. And of course, our goal is $10,000. As fun as that may be, it's unfortunate we had to be forced into that, but that was the ruling, and now we have to live with that. Hopefully, that won't be, that'll be a thing of the past, but it's something we have to deal with nevertheless. It's still money that we are going to lose. All I can say is, at this point right now, for everything else, is that the library's doing well. People seem to be happy, seem to be people coming back. Last year, we had, on average, about 20,000, 20,000 people coming in per month. As of now, we're getting about 10,000, which is good. People are starting to come back, which is great. Still a lot of online services that we offer to the community that seem to be very popular. In-person programming, right now, maybe the fall, we're looking at that. We want it as soon as we can possibly offer them. At a statewide library directors meeting last week, it seems, it seems as if a lot of libraries are moving in that direction, more in-person programming. They're doing a lot now with registration. We're still holding off, just to be sure. We're going to take our time. We want to be a little bit judicious as we move forward, but perhaps maybe in the fall, we'll see. But for the most part, I think the community appreciates the fact that we open, that we can provide services, the computers that we have and so forth. And echoing what Lois was just saying before, I think the community really appreciates the fact that we do offer this service to them. It's a place of refuge, of where it's neutral, and they can get the services that they really want at really no cost to them. For the most part, I think we're doing okay. I have no concerns about our media future, frankly. Now, I've been at Palm Harbor now, come this June. If my hair doesn't show it, 21 years, so it's been some time, but I like to think things are getting better as we move on. And I professionally don't have a real concern about the future of our library. I know it's going to do well. It is doing well. We have good plans, and I'm more happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Any questions for Jean? Okay, I think we're good, Jean.
Well, you're letting me off easy. Thank you very much, and I look forward to speaking with you very, very soon. Have a good day and stay well, please.
Erica, come on up.
Good morning, everybody. And Jean is right, it feels very weird after a decade of standing next to him to be solo up here. I really need to bring the papers with me because I could ramble on for hours about what we're doing in Palm Harbor. I'm so proud and fortunate to be a part of an organization that has built a strong community presence. Obviously, we've talked about it every, every presentation about the COVID impacts, and it did have a huge impact on CSA. We closed down for a solid two months, and what I am proud of, during that shutdown, we worked remotely, and programs that may, you may or may not be aware of, like the RCS food distribution that we do to over 70 families in Palm Harbor, staff came in and we worked outside, and we bagged up the food and still delivered it to the assisted living facility and had a certain timeframe for people to drive by and still pick up their food. So nobody was impacted in their pantries because we were shut down, and that was an important service that staff provided to the community. We were delayed this year, last year, starting school back, and at the 11th hour, the community reached long and hard to CSA about extending our camp program, so we actually were 12 weeks last summer instead of 10. There's pros and cons to that, but the biggest pro is that obviously it filled some of the gaps that COVID created in our budget. And we ended up successful in 2020 in spite of COVID. We ended our budget year at 95.76% of what we said we were going to bring in, so I think that's, that's a direct attribution to the staff that stands behind me and everything that we do. They're phenomenal, and they came up big during what we could have never seen coming. I do appreciate Mr. Burton mentioning CSA and the fun things that surprised us in 2021, that the gift that keeps on giving. It was a surprise to us that over 24,000 voters showed up in person during COVID for early voting, and then 10,000 people drove by and dropped off their ballots in our little drive-through area in Building 2. So that was happening in October, and then in January, when we thought things would calm down a little bit, we were surprised with the county and the fire department reaching out to provide vaccines for the county, but I believe that was a very successful collaboration of efforts, and we served, I believe it was over 12,000 vaccines were given out during that six-week timeframe. And then I thought we were done with that and got another surprise, and you're laughing over there, Mr. Burton. And the state reached out late on a Monday night, and we did, again, rise to the occasion somehow, some way, in our little tiny 99-square-foot building, gave out another 7,700 shots. So CSA Palm Harbor was directly impacted with parking issues, and the sheriff, I'm sure, could fill you in on that, but we came out successful, and we were able to help and partner with all of our partners to make that happen, and again, couldn't be more proud of that. I would like to thank Mr. Burton for putting the, the staff in place that you have. I would like to commend Nancy in her year with us. I understand it was only halftime, you could never convince me of that. We have monthly meetings with her as directors, and she's been a phenomenal asset to not just Fix-A, but unincorporated, I feel, is just Fix-A because she does pay an enormous amount of attention to our needs, and we can't thank you enough. It's making a huge difference. As a Palm Harbor resident, I'm thankful, as well as a Fix-A director. So we talked about our vaccination site, but I will tell you, we're probably experts. So if you have any questions about it, let us know, because staff answered thousands of phone calls and, and, but again, I can't say it enough, the staff just, that's what Parks and Recreation does. We just change to the, to the moment in time. We have begun our huge push for summer camp for 2021. As I said, we were blessed with 12 weeks of summer. Well, this week, this year, the way the, the calendar falls, it's eight full weeks of camp and two short weeks, because the kids get out on a Wednesday and go back on a Tuesday or Wednesday or something like that. So our camp this season is cut short. However, our revenue is way up over last year already. We are sold out in several, several, several weeks of camp, which speaks to the quality of program that we're offering and the demand in North County for parents to have a place to put their children while they're hopefully getting back to work and in some sense a normalcy. We've rearranged our senior programming that we finally got to bring back in the fall of last year, and we are moving some things around in our buildings to make room to keep the, probably 50% of senior programming that has come back to keep them coming back. That was a section of our population that I feel was, was homebound the most and needed social interaction the most, so we've designed a Zoom component to, that word Zoom, to Bingo. And in the summer, when we don't have the space to offer it in person, we're going to have, like Jean said, we don't have volunteers right now, a staff person actually called Zoom Bingo, for those that want to still have some type of social interaction while we're participating with our hundreds of children, which I invite each and every one of you to come visit me during June, July, and August. You know, if nothing else, 20, fiscal '20 and fiscal '21 have taught us to expect the unexpected, and we're actually getting pretty good at it. So through a conservative approach with staff, when we lost some staff members in January, due to their successes and moving on, we didn't replace those staff people. So now we're short volunteers, we're short staff, but the remaining staff, the men and women still standing, continue to deliver a product unexpectedly, unexpectedly throughout the year. We continue to pivot and patch our little building that we hope and pray the penny money comes through and we get to replace. We just threw down a temporary dance floor for our dance instructor to actually have something other than that, I think it's got to be 40-year-old VCT she's been tap dancing on. We have a total of nine families, I think it might actually be 10 as of today, that are scholarship through our dance, our summer camp program, and under my direction, we've never said no. Money's not going to keep anyone from allowing their kids to have an experience with us or adults, if there's an adult program that needs scholarship. We only scholarship the entire summer 10 families, so I anticipate we'll exceed our expected 12 families this year. We continue to build community relationships. I'm proud to sit on a chamber board as an honorary board member and meet monthly with them and work with the CEO Dean, who's been a phenomenal asset, again, added to our area. The nonprofit group that Jean and I have, More Jean Than I, created with all the nonprofits in Palm Harbor. One of the, the newer relationships that we created was the Pinellas County Education Foundation contacted us to be part of their internship program. So we just interviewed, I believe, four young ladies and men yesterday, phenomenal young adults, gives me hope for the future, and hopefully they'll will accept us as their partner this summer for seven weeks. And that's a totally new program. We've never done that, but I call that free labor in my budget. So they get to work 20 hours a week with us, and the education foundation gets to pay for it. If you guys would have told me last year we'd be still talking about masks and social distancing with Plexiglas, I probably, more to Charlie than anybody else, laughed at you, because Ken's not here this year, so I have to pick on you. And, but I would have been an a-sayer. I'm hoping that our new normal returns sooner than later, and this too shall pass, as my dad once said. Our plan is to plan for the worst and hope for the best, and we've positioned ourselves financially throughout the years, capitalizing money when we can out of our operation budget to be prepared. I'm fortunate not to be a library right now, apparently with what I hear from state funding, which we don't rely on, and fines that we don't rely on. So we just rely on our fees, which we do end up earning about 37% of our own revenues to balance our budget. Our committed partnerships with your staff and you continue to be fruitful, and I appreciate your willingness to allow us to partner with your staff, because it is very helpful on all, on all levels. Risk management and I just were out at Putnam because we had a neighbor complaint about a tree, and I look at Kim, because I'm sure she heard about it already, and so risk management came out and walked the property with me. So that's a phenomenal sense of partnership, and we can't appreciate it enough. With all that being said, I stand before you to formally ask for our quarter mill to be awarded to CSA Palm Harbor to continue the work that we're doing in North County. And what questions may you guys have of me at this point?
Well, first of all, thank you and your, and your team for the incredible work you guys did this year. It, it's just amazing to watch you all in action up there, and you have a great staff, and
Thank you.
And that relationship with the community really, you could really tell. I mean, it wasn't all smooth sailing, of course, with, with the emotional stuff that we're all going through. It certainly came out at times out there from some of the residents, but we can understand it, and you all were just so gracious in, in how you handled the residents. So thank you for all of that. Any questions from anybody here for Erica?
Commissioner Flowers, I apologize for not being available for the meeting in North County, but I promise we will get together soon. And next year, it's going to be your turn to pick on me, because that's the seat that picked on me for the last 11, so.
I won't do that.
Yeah, she's a lot, she's a
I did too, too. Things spoke up for you.
Oh, well, thank you. All right.
Great to see you.
Thank you.
Yep. All right, Mark. Mark Sanders, come on up for Eastlake Recreation. Hey, Mark, welcome.
Good morning. I'd like to first echo the sentiments of my colleagues and thank the board and staff for doing such a wonderful job with us at Fix-A. I'm fortunate to be part of a great group of directors that really support each other, so I just wanted to make sure that I, I mentioned that. Eastlake Recreation started in 2014, as you all know, with a group of, of, of young youth sports kids in their uniforms, addressing the board, trying to get some money to help them out, out there in Eastlake. That was kind of the birth of Eastlake Recreation. I started in February of 2015, so I've been here six years already, going on my seventh, which is kind of hard to believe. In that time, we have continued to address the infrastructure issues that needed to be addressed. We have really redid our electrical systems. We've done new lighting throughout the main complex, put in LED lighting on the majority of them. So we've, we've repaired our parking lot, we've added automatic gates, we have upgraded, like I said, our electrical system, we've improved our playing surface, made them safer. We have also put in new signage, security cameras, and right now, our big project is putting in a new irrigation system at the main complex. All these are big-ticket items that we really needed the help from the county and the village to, to do, so we appreciate that. Program-wise, we basically serve the 32,000-plus residents of the Eastlake community, which encompasses parts of unincorporated Tarpon Springs, as well as Palm Harbor. And within that Eastlake Fire District, we have approximately 3,000 kids that participate in our sports programs, our youth sports programs, and people that visit our facilities throughout the year are between, estimated at between 2 and 300,000. So we definitely serve a purpose in the North County community, and we would really like to add to that and, and add more recreational activities for not just the youth, but also adults. We're looking at possibly putting in, looking at new, new recreational activities such as volleyball courts, tennis courts, basketball courts, additional fields out at the Meadows area. So that being said, oh, one of the things I wanted to mention was, we started a program a few years ago called Top Soccer, and that is working, it's a, it's a program, a soccer program for kids with disabilities. It's been very successful for us, where we partner some of our kids in our soccer program, have a partner buddy program with, with a kid with a disability, and it's been very successful, and the families of these kids with special needs have been very appreciative of that. And it's been a great experience for not only those kids, but the kids that are working with the kids with disabilities. It's been a very rewarding experience, that many of them have been surprised how, how rewarding it has been. I am very excited for the opportunity, again, to be part of this group and to be kind of in the infancy of Eastlake Recreation. Exciting for the prospects of what it can be someday. Looking forward to, to working far into the future. And I do know that the, the, with Nancy McKibben now in there, we are working on extending our parking lot area, hopefully. Let's keep our fingers crossed on that, which is very well-needed. If you've ever been out there on a weekend, you know it's, it's crazy out there. So we need parking lot, we need, we need a lot of things, but we're working towards them, and we do raise a little bit of money ourselves on field rentals, but most, and but most of it is, it's, it's all ad lorem dollars, because we're just providing a service for the community. So is there any questions that I can answer?
Yeah, Mark, thank you for, for all your effort out there, and whatever you're doing with the parking that you have, we're not, we're not getting lots and lots of calls from the neighborhoods that we did before, so, you know, keep up the good work, and hopefully we can work out some of that additional parking soon. I mean, it's been going, we've been going at it almost since you've been there.
Yes.
But any questions for Mark? Okay, well, thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And to the, you know, the four Fix-A Directors, I just really wanted to say thank you for what you do. Also, they were, they had a meeting last night, and they talked about the Fix-A Board granted them the ability to create their own kind of ad hoc, long-term planning committee. They do a lot of it on their own individually, but kind of form a committee to make sure that they're looking forward out there ways, but also how they can continue to be better at working together on any efficiencies or how they can be more effective. So again, just a good group trying to even improve that to higher levels. So thank you for, for your efforts. Look forward to those, those efforts in the months, the months ahead. So thank you. We will move on to Feather Sound Community Services District, as Kevin Chambers here. Hello, Kevin.
Hi.
Come on up. Welcome. Good to have you here.
Thanks for having me. All right. Oh, yes, your presentation. Clicker here. Not sure, there we go.
Got it? All right.
I got it. Sorry about that.
Good to have you here.
Thank you. Okay, good morning. My name is Kevin Chambers, and I serve as the treasurer on the Feather Sound Community Services District. It's my third year serving, and I've lived in Feather Sound since 2015, and I've actually lived in Pinellas County my entire life. So in my presentation today, I'm going to speak a little bit about our purpose and, and what we do and some of the community improvement projects we've recently completed. So our taxing district is organized for the purpose of providing street lighting and to acquire, develop, and maintain green spaces for the residents of Feather Sound. Our board is made up of seven members. They're volunteer members, and they're appointed by this commission, so thank you. They're volunteer members, and they're appointed by this commission, so thank you. Our green spaces are maintained with mowing, irrigation, and routine tree services. We have a park in Feather Sound. It includes a fenced-in area dedicated to children with playground equipment, a basketball court, a large field used to play baseball and soccer. There's also two pavilions with picnic tables, which have been used a lot recently as more activities have shifted outside, and a boardwalk through a, a nature preserve. Part of our purpose is to maintain streetlights around the community. We lease about 300 light poles from Duke Energy, and we actually recently partnered with them to upgrade all of the lamps from the traditional lighting to LED lighting. They're brighter and more energy efficient, and they're actually pretty cool because they are designed and built to direct more light down to the street and the sidewalk as opposed to losing some of the light upward. And so it's actually a brighter light. A lot of good feedback on that. Some people think they're too bright. I'm going to speak about some community improvement projects. The biggest one we've just completed is our main entrance sign off of Almerton Road at Feather Sound Drive and Caroline Parkway. You can see in the middle picture there is the old sign, and above it is the rendering of what the finished product was going to look like. The bottom picture with the fountain is the final product, and you can see there, the rocks around the, the bank, the pond there is a soil stabilization and erosion project that was kind of uncovered as they started doing all this, this sign work. So that is being finished up now. And then the final part of the project is going to make it look nice and install some landscaping around the sign. As I mentioned earlier, we have a basketball court over in our recreation area, and the surface was cracking and the backboards were very old, so we recently had that professionally resurfaced and put in all-new backboards there. That gets a lot of use in, in the community. This is our cash flow summary. It goes back to 2017. It includes 2021 and our proposed budget for 2022. Additionally, a four-year forecast. You can see that most of our utilities, maintenance, and admin costs are pretty standard and don't fluctuate much, especially going forward. The biggest changes, if any, would be community improvements, and you can see that we've budgeted to have some funding there for community improvement projects going forward. We try to do something every year, whether big or small. Our request is no mileage increase. We'd like to keep it where it is, which is at a 0.7. We're going to use that for our annual maintenance and administrative expenses and to continue, like I said, with community improvements, finalizing the landscaping around the sign and perhaps finally being able to put a dog park in, which I know we've been talking about for quite some time now. But I know it's, it's something that I think the, the residents want. It seems to be popular, and it's just another thing to be able to do outside, which I think a lot of people got used to doing this, this past year. So that is everything. Thank you so much for, for having me, and of course, I'll take any questions if there are any.
Well, Kevin, thank you for being here, and thank you for your service. I mean, it just, it's a tough, tough work. I mean, when you, it's like a big HOA almost.
Right.
It's like, right close to the people.
Yes.
So I know you guys really do a great job out there. Any questions for Kevin? Yes, Charlie?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know a few years ago, you all got some funds from, out of our MSTU grant program for the mulch at the, at the park there. I just didn't know if you had anything coming on the radar as far as those kind of projects in the next few years that you're, and your plan. I know you have to talk about the dog park, but anything else on the radar?
I can't say for sure right now that we've, we've discussed that far. We've kind of been focusing on dog park. It seems to be the, the goal we've had for quite some time now, and I think as, we're now at a point where we have the, the funds to be able to do it. And so I think as we move on from that project, we'll definitely be able to look at, at more things like that.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Kevin? Thank you.
Thanks so much.
Appreciate it.
You'll have a good one. Take care.
Thanks to, to the group, please.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, Mr. Administrator?
Good morning, Commissioners. This morning, we have each of our Assistant Twos that are going to talk about the respective unincorporated areas and the plans that they've developed with the community over the past year. It's actually really nice to see some of the work that, that each one of them have put into the respective areas kind of come into fruition and actually seeing some concrete plans and thoughts about how to make investments and, and help develop some of our unincorporated areas. And I'm particularly proud of these three individuals and the work that they've done to, to accomplish that. So this morning, we have Chris Moore, Nancy McKibben, and Brian Lowack up to talk about the work that they're doing in unincorporated Pinellas County. And first, oh, first up is Nancy, I guess, so.
To keep you on your toes.
They, they switched, they switched the order, so.
Sorry. Thank you.
And by the way, they, we said 50/50. That's budgeted 50/50. We know Nancy spends way more time.
Don't tell Kelly that. Good morning, Commissioners, Administrator Burton. My name is Nancy McKibben, and I represent the unincorporated residents of North County, and I am joined by my colleagues, Brian Lowack, who represents Midland South County, and Chris Moore, who represents the Lillman Communities. So we're starting off with a little summary of our collective accomplishments, and that's why I'm, I'm up here first. So, oops. Uh-oh, oh, there it is. Thank you, Bill, for fixing this. So I'd like to just spend a moment to talk about, again, our collective accomplishments, but I first have to say that these would not have been accomplished without the assistance of many talented people with the county. So if Malia Cussera and Eric Bell are listening in, I want to thank you because there was a lot of background information that went into this. And one of the first things was this boundary map that distinctly shows the unincorporated areas, and we wanted to let our unincorporated residents know who they can contact and where they can go for information. Now, if you all have PowerPoints on your own, if you see that underline on unincorporated, that's actually a hyperlink to a webpage that was constructed especially for unincorporated residents, and it consolidates all the information, hopefully, huge task for people that otherwise would have had to navigate to all these other county department websites. So all those lines of text that you see are hyperlinks that'll take a resident right to what they want to, to find, hopefully. So I don't have the ability to bring that up for you right now, but you all, you all do if you just hover over the word unincorporated in, in the title and hit Control and click. And then also in that list of places where you can link to is an element for the new process that we have for the MSTU special funding request for nonprofit organizations in unincorporated areas. And I know that we've heard some of the different funding projects that have been already approved through that. So this, this allows a lot more exposure to that opportunity for nonprofits and transparency. So we already have a few in for this fiscal year, and we look forward to receiving some more. So at this point in time, I would like to go into the beginning of our individual summaries about our strategic goals and accomplishments, and on the unincorporated boundary map, you see that dark purple shaded area is obviously North County. And geographically, it occupies a lot of area, but in population, it does as well. We, we really, just in the two zip, or the three zip codes of Palm Harbor, it's about 88,000 people, but if you include that unincorporated area of Tarpon Springs, as mentioned before, it's about 98,000, and that's about 40% of the population of the combined unincorporated areas. If unincorporated North County were a municipality, it would be the third largest in the county, only exceeded by St. Petersburg and the City of Clearwater. I was very fortunate to have our Palm Harbor Community Service Agency Directors up before me because they articulated extremely well what they do for our community. On paper, it'll say that those four agencies provide library and leisure services, services, but I think you heard well that it goes so far beyond that. They're offering social and cultural services, senior services for homebound folks, food banks, and, and other kinds of family services. Just the summer camps alone in Palm Harbor, as Erica described, fill a void for those families who, you know, have school-aged children at home, and if, you know, one or both parents have to work, it's, it's just an incredible benefit. So I do focus a lot on helping those agencies achieve their goals, and I'm so pleased and proud to be able to do that. And I also should mention that Administrator Burton's idea to create these positions was so brilliant for so long, so many decades, it, you know, it was a need that he recognized. And it was an experiment, so for me, I was job-sharing with my previous position and this, this one as well. And I'm very pleased to say that as of October 1, I will be solely focused on my administrative responsibilities to North County, so I can only imagine what other achievements we'll have to report to you next year. One of our other very important initiatives is the revitalization of downtown Palm Harbor. You know that in October of 2020, you all passed the Downtown Palm Harbor Master Plan, which was a, it builds on the series of improvements that began in 1999 with the establishment of the Old Palm Harbor Main Street Program and the Downtown Palm Harbor Historic District. Well, the next step is the Downtown Palm Harbor Form Base Code that will, is already in the approval queue. It will be at the DRC in May and the LPA in June, and the BCC should hear it for the first time in July, and then the final public hearing in August. And what that Form Base Code will do is an important tool. It will result to promote the unique and vibrant core to coastal Palm Harbor and will establish a framework for the sustainable redevelopment of that area. Another very important step is that we've developed a, an advisory board that is comprised of community stakeholders who have invested very heavily in, in the future of downtown Palm Harbor. They're business and community members, and we anticipate that this board will be the underpinning of the sustainable revitalization for this area. And that's not the only thing that we have going up there. As part of this revitalization effort, we have some projects that are going on right now, and one of them is to create a sustainable master streetscape plan and parking plan. Now, this is a FY22 budget request, and it will allow us to reevaluate a streetscape plan that was done in 2001, but also importantly is to identify alternatives that were, that will meet the future parking needs in this area. The regional stormwater facility is also very important because Palm Harbor was platted in the late 1800s. The parcels are very small. Sometimes the developers can combine parcels, but even then, sometimes they're very small and would be difficult to accommodate the stormwater treatment requirements for development. So there is an existing stormwater facility that served the original old Palm Harbor District, but now that, that original district was about 13 acres. We're increasing that activity center to about 64 acres, and we need to increase that regional stormwater facility. We have identified a alternative, and a preliminary engineering report has been generated, which is currently being reviewed. So if, if the proof of concept is there, we potentially could go into design and permitting in, in fiscal year '22. We also have a branding effort underway, and that's in partnership. The Downtown Palm Harbor Advisory Board is working with Creative Pinellas and the county's own marketing and communications department to develop that branding element for the, for that area. We have a lot of partners in North County that we work with consistently. We don't want to forget our friends at the Palm Harbor Museum, the Food Pantry, the Chamber of Commerce is an extremely important partner, CNCN, we have our directors, and we also have the small village associations of Crystal Beach and Ozona. So very busy. I'm very happy to be in this position, and I, and I thank County Administrator and the board for allowing that to happen. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, first of all, thank you for the report. Thank you for the energy. Thank you for getting some things moving along, actually getting things implemented and getting things approved. And I really also wanted to echo the thanks, I know, Commissioner Justice, and I've really been working towards this position of, of being, being able to represent an area and cutting across all the departments that are needed to get work done. Sometimes it's not easy. I mean, the residents deal with it all the time, trying to work through the departments. Having somebody that spearheads those efforts, I think, has just been, just been wonderful. So I continue to see great things happening and also look forward to your full-time effort next year. So just, I think as we move forward, there's obviously that, that continuing pressures on the, on the surrounding neighborhoods we're going to continue feeling. So I really like the idea of that, looking at the parking and the wayfinding as a way to try to calm those interactions, because, well, just success, that's what comes with success, you know? So the more things happen, the more energies that are created, the more we're going to need to be always aware of those things. But just keep up the great work. Look forward to the Form Base Code coming in August and at least helping some of these developments get off, off-center. But really very positive, very positive efforts. Any other comments, questions for Nancy?
Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you, Nancy.
All right, Mr. Lowack, welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners. Brian Lowack, Assistant County Administrator for Central and Southern Pinellas County, and I'm here this morning to give you an update on, on some of our work in the, in that community. So the approach that we're taking in, in Central and Southern Unincorporated Pinellas County is to establish community plans for each individual community. And right now, the focus is in the High Point and Greater Ridge Crest communities, and we're working with community groups to create those plans. Those plans are going to focus on goals, strategies, and priority projects for each of those communities. Sorry, if I could figure this clicker out, I'd do a little better. In the High Point community, I want to point out the goals that we've established so far. Community connectivity, enhance economic opportunities, expand service delivery. In the Greater Ridge Crest community, which includes Ridge Crest and Dansville, we're focusing on enhanced connectivity, preserve and enhance natural systems, encourage local retail, brownfield and infield redevelopment, and streamline service delivery. Next, I want to talk about who are these partners that we're working with and where are we at in, with our progress. So in the Ridge Crest community, we are fortunate enough to have a community group that was already established, which brings together all the community service providers as well as law enforcement and, and other community leaders. We meet monthly, that's called the Friends of Ridge Crest. We meet monthly, and we've been developing the plan for that community. We have recently completed that plan, and we're also fortunate there where we look back in, in the history books and we found out, we didn't have to reinvent the wheel. There were numerous plans that have been created over the years, so we simply took those plans, polished them up, made sure that anything that was still a priority for the community, we kept that in, and anything else that has been completed or is no longer in need of the community, we took those out. So the next step there, we'll now take that plan and build it into our community departments, and then we'll look for funding to accomplish those projects contained in that plan. In the High Point community, we basically had to start from scratch here. There were... There was not a established community group in place. So what we did was, we worked with the High Point Neighborhood Family Center and Margot Adams. She took the lead, and we, we got community partners from throughout that community, including the principal at High Point Elementary, community police officer, private businesses such as Pinch a Penny, clergyman, private business owners, and also community residents. And so we started meeting in February. We meet monthly, and the focus is to come up with a draft plan. We hope to have that draft plan in place in, in next month in May. We'll then take that plan to the community at large to get their input. Once we do that, we'll then bring it back and embed that in the community departments as appropriate and look for funding sources. So I want to talk about, I'll just touch on a few key projects that are either completed or in, in progress now. The first one is the YMCA game field lighting in Ridgecrest at Largo Junior Packers, an organization that you funded with an MST request in 2019. They play, they practice on the practice field, and they, they play on the game fields at the YMCA. And the lighting on the practice fields is completely gone. There is no more lighting. They practice, these kids practice at night, obviously, after school. And so what they've, they've been having to do is put on the game field lights just to make sure they've got a little bit of light where they're practicing. Now those game field lights have, have begun to go out, so we need to replace those, and we did find some CDBG money to do so this year. Improvements to the tennis and pickleball courts down in Tierra Verde. There are currently two courts in Tierra Verde that are multipurpose for both pickleball and tennis. And pickleball is, is blowing up, not only in, in the Tierra Verde community, but all over the state of Florida. So we, we provided some funding for improvements there last year. You all did through an MST grant. And right now, we're working with the TVCA to construct another court on that facility. So we're in the planning stages of that. Ridgecrest and Dansville Monument signs. So a community monument, monument sign might not sound like a big deal because you drive past them, you know, all the time throughout the community. It says, "Welcome, welcome to, you know, our community, Dunedin Clearwater." Well, they don't have any in the Ridgecrest and Dansville community, and they, those residents drive past those same signs that you and I do. They see that, and, and the residents in the Ridgecrest and Dansville community are, are proud. They're proud of their community. There's generations of their families that live in that community. Some have lived there their whole lives. They'll be born and they'll die there. They're proud of it, and they want people to know that when they drive in on Pine and Wilcox that you're entering Dansville, or wearing on Almerton and 119th, you're in the Ridgecrest community. So that's been a want for a long time. We finally have been able to identify CDBG funds to construct those signs, and we are currently in the design phase for those signs. Piggybacking off of that, the history in the Dansville community, some of you may or may not know all the history. I've lived near there my whole life, and I knew there was history. I didn't know how much history. Dan Henry, one of the founders in that community, working with the historical board. We, last year, I believe it was, were able to designate Dansville Historic Community. The monument, the state monument sign is, is on its way here. It might actually be here, sitting in, perhaps in this building as we speak. And that's going to be unveiled in May, May 22, I believe that is. Mark your calendars. The community would love to see you out there. High Point Neighborhood Family Center, the Teen Empowerment Center. If you'll recall, the YMCA used to have a presence in the High Point community. Last year, they sold that facility to Chaff Properties, who does a lot of work in the High Point community. Chaff has, has taken that, and they've consolidated their offices to that location. And between partnerships, Chaff was able to provide a location for this, this facility. We were able to provide some funding. High Point Neighborhood Family Center also went out and got some private donations, and they were recently able to open up that facility, which serves teens in that High Point community. They've got basketball courts, a pool, a computer lab. It's, it's really a great place for the teens in the High Point community. And finally, the High Point Recreation Facility. That's a project that you're familiar with. We are currently in the design phase. We just had a kickoff meeting with the consultant earlier this month, and the community is extremely excited about that. Brief CIP update on a couple of the projects, the main projects in these areas. First is the High Point Recreation Facility. Design and engineering, as I just stated, is in progress, and that'll be wrapped up this fiscal year, and it'll be ready for construction in fiscal year 2022. Tierra Verde Community Center, the design and engineering, there is programmed funding in fiscal, in the CIP plan for fiscal year 2022. That should take a year, and it'd be ready for construction the following year. Now, I do want to note that just because they're ready for construction doesn't mean they're going to be constructed. And I, and I think that's important to know, because while there is money programmed, that's a, as you know, that's a yearly CIP process. So once that design comes, that's a decision that's going to have to be made. How do we, how do you prioritize those projects and put them into the CIP plan? And I'm sure you'll be having more discussions about that in, in the near future. So that's my update for mid and south Pinellas County, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you, Brian. Awesome, awesome update. Yes, Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Brian. That was a really great program. Could you repeat the date? Was, did you say May 28 in Danville?
I believe it's May 22. I'll confirm and, and send your office an invite.
Thank you. I would appreciate that. And secondly, I was intrigued by your comments about the historical nature of Danville. And you know, in another chapter of my life, after the No Name Storm, some folks might remember that, there were huge swaths of Danville that were completely blown away. And that was my first introduction into the Danville community. So I think it might be a really good opportunity if someone from Danville, who kind of lived through that awful time, could come and maybe give everybody a little primer about the historical context of Danville. I think that would really help all of us collectively to make better decisions as it relates to that particular area of the county.
I think there's certainly available residents in that community, a plethora of them who were there when that happened. They can tell you what it was like before, what it was like during, and now after. And I think working with the historical board, we could probably tell a pretty great story and bring that before you.
I think it would be very, very interesting, and it's a great project for Commissioner Justice with his true Pinellas things that he does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Gerard.
Just a question about the High Point community park, or, yeah, I didn't realize that we were so far along with the design and everything. That's wonderful. Where is it going to be? Is it?
So, so that's going to be right there on, it's going to be between Pinellas Technical College and High Point Elementary. It's the old High Point Elementary site, and we did enter into an agreement with the Pinellas County School Board to build the facility there. So the residents are excited, we're excited. It's been out there for a long time, and, and you all made it happen.
So are, is the city of Largo participating at all? I know that was an issue with the school board.
We still have some more work to do to talk about how we're going to operate this. So that's a, to be determined.
We're moving forward.
We're still working on it. Yeah, okay. Thanks.
Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It is May 22 is the Dansville Historical Marker presentation. Just as a thought that we always need to keep this on our radar is, and you mentioned about, we've got these programmed in our CIP programs for 23, 24, whatever, but these are the kind of projects that legislators love to fund in their budget requests when they go to Tallahassee, as we're looking at next year's legislative priorities. So something that's a step closer in '22 or '23, that's the kind of thing that certainly we could maybe attract some of our local legislators to be interested in. And there's different, it's not only just general fund earmarks or turkeys, whatever you want to call them, but there's also departmental budgets that may be able to address some of these kind of recreational and park. So I just always want us to think, be thinking about that, and I know you are, but I want us collectively to be thinking about making that ask out of Tallahassee.
I'll make sure to communicate those concerns to our legislative liaison.
Very nicely said.
Can you, can you copy us on that memo?
Yeah, and my only other comment would be, it's just great work. I mean, I think we, we look for ways to build the community, whether it's in North County, Mid-County, Lealman, South County, whatever. But getting these advisory committees together, I think, is probably really key, because it really is the energy that, people that are, that are totally invested in that community, and that just come out and give you all the emotion and the, and the passion that you need to really start developing those plans. Because at the end of the day, they have to get implemented, and there has to be, to Commissioner Long's comment, you know, people that can tell the story about their community. So having those folks and having those community, those advisory groups, whether they ever lead to a CRA is a different issue, but they at least, that part of it and getting some funding to make things happen is still, still critical. So thank you for your, your efforts this past year.
Yes, sir.
Look forward to hearing more.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay.
Hello there, welcome.
Good morning, everyone. Thanks for your time here this morning. My name's Chris Moore. I'm the Assistant to the County Administrator for the Lealman Community. As you recall, I presented in January on progress we've made establishing a work plan and a process for implementing that work. Today, we thought it'd be a good time to come back and talk about how some of these projects we've identified here in our work plan tie back to our original vision for the CRA when it was established, as well as how they relate to some of our short-term goals here in the near term. So in the interest of time, I'll move quickly through these slides. Lunch will be around the corner, so I don't want to stand before you all and the busy agenda we have for the rest of the day. But if I skip over anything of interest to you, obviously, I'll answer any questions you have at the end. The first goal, you see, references establishing a community identity and branding for the community. You've heard some of this from Brian and Nancy as well. This is a key aspect in Lealman. Lealman has some really strong underlying assets that bode well for its future growth. This includes its, its cultural and environmental assets. In many ways, Lealman is the most diverse place in Pinellas County. It also, its strategic mid-county location provides certainly ease of access across the bay to North County, South County. Lealman Exchange, for example, is, is but 10 minutes from downtown St. Pete, and that's a benefit that serves both our residents and the business community as well. Lealman's affordable land and, and high ground elevation certainly will pay dividends in an era of rising seas and rising insurance rates. So we are focused on building off these core strengths of Lealman and, and beginning to tell Lealman's story overall. The second key goal I'll touch on there is improving aesthetics and beautification in the community. Lealman's natural beauty is really apparent in its environmental assets. We have certainly poised to capitalize on, on this in, in the future years ahead here with the Joe's Creek Greenway Trail Project, the Neary Park Master Plan. But we also have Sawgrass Lake Park in the, in the northern part of the CRA. And while that, the park itself is outside of Lealman, the entrance is in Lealman. I don't think historically we've necessarily associated that park with, with Lealman, but as we begin to develop these themes, environmental assets are a key one. And coupled with that is, is Lealman Park. Now, it's a, a neighborhood park, smaller in scale, but seemingly growing in importance by the day. We've seen a lot of strong construction, new construction growth right in that area. We have Lealman Heights coming up right behind it with the Habitat Single Family Homes and the Multi-Family Project as well. So that park as well will be a great amenity for folks to walk into there on the backside of 54th Avenue. And there alone, you have four really strong environmental assets that, you know, stand tall certainly against any community, but certainly one of the size of Lealman. And we certainly are focusing on how do we enhance that? How do we enhance that as a core strength? And so aesthetics, whether it's streetscaping projects, landscaping projects, our residential and commercial facade improvement programs, all that geared toward lifting the aesthetic and, and certainly in an attempt to attract additional investment. And here are some specific projects that we feel, whether it's CRA projects or CIP projects, tie back to that original vision, tie back to some of those goals we've talked about. Just to touch on a couple here in the interest of time. One, we've heard about the Gateway and Wayfinding Sinages. We certainly have that need in Lealman and have an exciting project coming up. We've developed a scope of work. It's been routed through all internal departments and ready to negotiate with a consultant. But establishing Gateway and Wayfinding signage, so the design and construction of those signs, but also the, the surrounding sites as well. So one example I like to give is the, the Gateway at 49th Street and 40th Ave. If you're familiar with that area, it's, the creek crosses right there. In time, you'll have folks literally stopping to, to let people pass by. We think it's a great spot for a, a nice "Welcome to Lealman" sign. But in addition to that, you know, enhance landscaping, decorative streetscaping opportunities, some decorative guardrails, for example, and a few other sites like that that we'll be able to capitalize on and tie back to some of those core underlying assets and really accentuate the creek and some of those other strengths Lealman has. The other project here I'll touch on is the Housing Services Request for Proposals. That's an effort intended to capitalize on the great work our Code Enforcement Division has done recently in addressing some of the challenges we face with lean properties. This effort right now is in, in an early planning stage, but it's geared to be a two-pronged approach, if you will. Half of the RFP would focus on rehabilitating homes for low-income residents. So many residents, as you know, may be faced with lean challenges and want to remain in place, but they simply don't have the financial means to, to address those challenges. And so we think that that aspect, in addition to supporting our affordable housing needs, will help address some of the, the concerns we've had with lean properties. The other half of the RFP would be focused more on, many times, these properties may be bank-owned or investor-owned and certainly more suited for redevelopment. So the other half of that project would be to capitalize and stimulate the new construction, single-family home construction in that area. So looking for service providers to, to cover both of those, those ends of the spectrum will be a key need. And as we all know, those lean properties are often a, a key driver and blight in the community. And so really excited about this opportunity to, to directly address that issue. And, you know, that ties back to multiple goals in terms of, you know, catalyzing redevelopment, attracting investment, lifting the aesthetic of the community, and so on. And another project we've kicked off here recently is a mural program with Creative Pinellas. You can see here, that's actually the Generator Enclosure, which is a recently completed project, a big thanks to our real estate management staff. But there's, we now have a whole building generator there in the, in Lealman Exchange parking lot to, to power the two-story building there and, and enhance our sheltering capability. The other building you see here is a, a commercial structure over on 28th Street in the Joe's Creek Industrial District. So the agreement with Creative Pinellas calls for up to five murals, both on either public or private property. And this is an example of what those sites might look like with murals. So these are not the, the designs, per se. We're in a public outreach process right now, and a big thanks to Creative Pinellas. They've done a tremendous job early on, reaching out to many of our, our key community partners. But, so while these aren't the final designs, we're seeking input on that, just an example of, again, what it might look like in the future, and, and again, how this ties back to, to listing, lifting the overall aesthetic in the community. And again, working with partners, we can't thank our partners enough. Just a few highlights here. Spring is in the air, the, the teaching garden there at the Broke School with, along with Keep Pinellas Beautiful on Lealman Exchange is, is growing again. Those kids really love participating in that. It's been a, a really rewarding program for the school and the students there. In the center, we have Career Source onboard now, again, operating a career workforce center at the Lealman Exchange. And to the right, it's Tanya Curtin, one of our staff, a, a big hero early on here in the, the days of the Lealman Exchange. And that's an important picture to me. I mean, it's, she's, she's helping a resident there with one of their residential facade grants, and that's a very common occurrence throughout the history of that program, to have folks come in, rely on us to even print the paperwork for them, help them fill it out if they have different technological challenges. And, you know, that's one area where I think we've, we've certainly excelled, you know, in our customer service there in the community. We really stress that a lot, and we're fortunate to have some great staff that, I think that that work is really going to pay dividends in time. And finally, again, with our partners, many different partners across the board, this is a key strategy for us. You know, we, we understand. You know, we understand, as we've said in the past, with partners, we can do more. And that's a core focus for us. We really want to maximize those public-private partnerships and really do what we can to support these partners and make their lives easier and more efficient as we move forward. So, with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Long.
Thank you, Chris, for that very comprehensive report. And I just want to weigh in on the mural because I love the one with the sea turtle because it reminds me of, before Mr. Neary passed away, how he used to talk so passionately about how many little kids in the Lealman area had never, ever been to the beach or knew little to nothing about the oceans. I just think that that speaks very loudly to sharing something that's so precious in our county and how much we all treasure our beaches and the Gulf of Mexico. So, that's my vote. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Justice.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Chris, thanks for all your good work, and I want to echo your lauding Tanya as the first person that people see when they come into the exchange. She does a great job at welcoming folks and making them feel at ease there and serving them, so want to add to your praise of her. Talk to me about the, because I think we heard it from Nancy, we heard it from Brian, and we heard it from you, about that wayfinding signs, the branding, the, and I don't want to get into logo design because I always lose on the logo design up here, but those kind of things, so important to the identity of a community. We see it continually, people who don't know Lealman. I watched a Bay News 9 story the other day, and it was about a person, Laura, who was a key volunteer, you probably saw the story. And it was a reporter who described Lealman as a neighborhood of North St. Petersburg. And then on, where it's a crime story, they will quickly identify it as Lealman, you know. And so, we need to keep working on how we, because there's so many good things happening there, so many good folks that are working in there, that part of that, so that's a long preamble to my question of, what's our timetable? When will we see the beautiful welcome sign, those identifiers, those wayfinders? When will we see those?
I will certainly follow up with a more direct timeline. So, we do have the scope of work fleshed out internally. We're now beginning to, we've identified a consultant, engaging them now to begin the negotiation process. But I certainly believe that'll come online this year. And, again, it is a key, key effort. I think it sends a strong signal, obviously, for the importance of the community and the pride of growing up in that community. But in many ways, it sends a signal that Lealman is open for business, that we're drawing attention in that way. And so, you know, I think it is a great first step. And many of these projects, it's a great opportunity for us to hone in on some of those core strengths and really relate back to developing that identity. So, I'll certainly get back to you on a timeline for the construction, but, again, it'll be this year.
And then, I'm glad we have a website dedicated up. If you haven't seen it on the county site, that's host, the Lealman Exchange has a site with on our site that tells what's going on. How do you feel that the folks in the community are getting, and I know COVID set us back on having more community events and things, but how do you feel folks are getting to understand what the exchange is and what's available there?
Well, we've recently completed our strategic planning process, and that's slated to come before you all on May 6th at another work session. Perhaps not surprisingly, that we've got, we've heard from the community that we need to raise awareness around the facility. And that's certainly an effort we've identified in the strategic plan. I think in many ways, you know, we're in good shape. We've come a long way. You know, the facility at this point is about two-thirds leased up. And so, in this early phase, we've been focused on building those operations, building our capacity for those operations, but we've really honed some of those efforts. We've got strong partners onboard now. I think we're in a position now to market. You know, I think to a certain extent, you want to be ready to put your best foot forward and be ready to market your program, and I think we've arrived at that stage. I look forward to bringing that strategic plan back to you all, and I'm confident that we will be able to, as COVID alleviates, increase foot traffic in the facility.
Thank you. And then, just for all the three that presented, I think back to when I started on the Commission, Commissioner Long, and we talked about having a, one person that was an unincorporated czar, and I was selfishly, obviously, pushing for Lealman-focused, and a Commissioner who's no longer on the board said, "Well, if we did it for Lealman, we'd have to do it for all the areas." And I thought, "Well, okay, that's, you know, that's okay with me." So, I want to thank you, Mr. Burton, for making it a priority in your staffing and your funding. We're seeing the results, and our citizens are benefiting. So, thank you all for being here today.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, County Administrator Burton.
Commissioner Flowers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to say that I'm so excited about driving through Lealman and seeing how even the storefronts of certain plazas that are along some of the major roadway corridors really look inviting now, and you can tell where you are when you're driving through. And also, some of the issues that have been related to flooding that used to occur in the Lealman community. So, I certainly wanted to applaud my colleagues on all the work that they did, as well as you prior to me arriving here, because I can see the difference and I can see the success. I also am excited about any potentials that we may have to further partner with Pinellas Technical College and others to enhance AM skills and some of the other opportunities that can come to the Lealman Exchange and be available to the residents there while, you know, the children are in school, the adults are, you know, getting some certification trainings and some additional healthcare services through Community Health Center. So, I think this model, for me, is a model that maybe some of our CRA people should follow when it comes to what you're doing to address just the whole ambiance of, and marketing of how a community looks when you're trying to elevate them so that they can then expand, provide that economic development services, service to the community, as well as keeping intact with affordable housing and all of those other things. So, I'm just really excited when I drive through there now, and I can see the evolution of change in an affirming way.
Well, thank you for that feedback, Commissioner. And we've heard from the residents as well. I mean, we're starting to see those noticeable changes. Folks are getting excited. We've got great community engagement. The Advisory Committee for the CRA is as active as it ever. The newest member, Jeremy Heath, whom we all appointed, great leadership there as our new Vice Chair, and Gary Grooms is the Chair. But folks that are really willing to put in the work to help, not, you know, to roll up their sleeves and really help staff accomplish our goals. So, appreciate this feedback and thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Commissioner Flowers. Mr. Gerard.
Yeah, I just wanted to congratulate you two. It's pretty amazing what's going on out there. And, you know, you mentioned Ray Neary. It seemed like for many years, Ray would come and just bug us about doing something in Lealman, and he was the lone voice that would come in and, you know, shame us into doing something there. But it's so, it's exciting to have so many people involved now and speaking up and saying, "No, we don't want this, but we do want this," and that's incredible, you know, to have that kind of cohesion, because in the beginning, it wasn't all that cohesive. And that's true for the other areas as well. And it's just, it's, I'm excited about this whole thing. This was a great idea. I don't remember, I know, Dave, you had a lot to do with having those specific people, but what a wonderful thing that we've done, and I hope we can always hang on to this kind of representation of our unincorporated areas because it's been a long time coming, and it's very cool.
Yeah. Thank you again, Commissioner. And Mr. Neary's legacy certainly lives on, as revered a community leader as certainly I've ever encountered, and we work to honor his legacy.
Chris, just a couple things, real quick. Just, first of all, we really want to commend you for leading our first CRA as a county. I really, you know, I've talked to Barry about it. I think we, as a sitting CRA, I mean, we are the CRA as well, maybe a little bit, we need to engage a little bit more with your Advisory Committee more periodically, just to kind of get the latest, whatever you might want to focus on. Like, I like to hear more about the efforts from Feeding Tampa Bay and hear more about the AM skill. Commissioner Flowers, you mentioned PTEC and AM skills. And strategically, it was moved from East Lake down to Mid County so that it could access more people. And we all knew that, you know, thinking out loud, that AM skills are the kind of skills that that is supposed to develop is really one of the shortcomings that we have in the county as far as talent. So, I'd really like to know more about that and what we're doing to upgrade that. But also, don't be shy about engaging us as a CRA because I really think we need to be really linked more closely. And whether we ever do a second or third CRA in the county, a lot of it will have to do with the success that you have and whether we think that model fits in other areas or not. So, anyway, great job. Really look forward to your continued work down there.
Well, thank you, sir. We look forward to engaging, increasing our engagement with you and certainly provide updates on May 6th with the strategic plan in terms of Feeding Tampa Bay and AM skills. And just a big thank you to our staff as well. You know, Brian and Nancy are standing before you today, but really, our staff is completely behind us, and really, they're the ones driving all this great work you're seeing. So, big thanks to everybody there.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Barry, did you have anything?
Well, you're going to see the Lealman Strategic Plan on May 6th. They're going to be back as the CRA at the August work session, so you're going to see them a lot more frequently. But just to close out, you know, when we started this program, you know, I think we gave really a lot of guidance, and I think I said, "Make something happen," right? So, you're seeing individuals really step forward, you know, and you saw what they've been able to accomplish by engaging the community, both as individuals, but also as a collective team. They meet, they talk, because they're very unique areas, and they're learning from each other and figuring out how to make things happen. It's really exciting to see, you know, them grow and learn, and Tom has, Amonte works with them, and they're really, you know, coming together to make some things happen that I don't think, as individual departments, would have ever been able to coalesce around a single vision. And so, it is exciting. I'm very proud of them, and I was really excited to see the reports and things that I didn't know were occurring. So, yeah, I was, I'm glad for the progress and look forward to all the great things that can happen in the future.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris. All right. No, okay. I'm just checking to see, you know, good breaking points to grab food. It's not here yet, so, and we can just kind of have a working lunch anyway, so. But we can move on to Item 7, I guess, and get started with that, the solid waste power purchase agreement and recycled materials update. Thank you.
Yep, and Paul Sacco is here to provide that update.
Well, hello there. Long time no see. Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to be here. Happy Earth Day to everybody. So, okay, this is news, so hopefully, we were able to move with our clicker. So, again, I'm Paul Sacco, Department Director for the Department of Solid Waste. I'm going to be providing you two updates today. The first, on the power purchase agreement with Duke Energy for energy sales from our waste energy facility, and then the second, on recycled materials. Specifically, I'll be reporting back to the Board with their direction to the Solid Waste Technical Management Committee, the TMC, that you provide it and ask for action back in January of 2020. All right, success. So, just some power background on the power purchase agreement. The county's enjoyed a 30-year power purchase agreement with Duke Energy that's been very favorable to the county. There's two components of that power purchase agreement. There's the energy sales component, as well as the capacity payment component. Capacity payment is really the cost avoidance that the utility would incur if our facility didn't exist, and then energy sales is just our straight energy that's being generated and distributed to the grid. And FY '24, at the end of FY '24, our power purchase agreement is going to expire. I'm sorry, it's actually the end of calendar year, 2024. And at that time, the expected sales will be 9.17 million for energy and 77.4 million for capacity payment. That's our last payment that we'll receive. When you look at FY '21, the capacity payment really makes up about 57% of the solid waste department budget. And the balance would come from tipping fees and also some of the energy sales. So, we've had three years of renegotiation with Duke Energy. It was a little bit interrupted during COVID, but, you know, we were able to circle back. But we really weren't able to attain a renegotiated contract that would have been favorable to the county. And there were a couple obstacles in the way. There were some state statutes that Duke Energy just couldn't get by. And then there were some capital or corporate cost of capital requirements that they had that they report to the Utilities Commission that was also an obstacle. And really, the county's position was looking to blend and extend the existing payments that we have over another 20-year period. But the requirements of a statute using the present value of that money really couldn't change, which wouldn't really be a benefit to us to push our money out. It'd be better for us to take that money and tuck it away in our accounts where we would be able to have that. So, negotiations, for all practical purposes, have been terminated. So, what happens after the power purchase agreement expires? Well, per state statute, Duke Energy has to offer and purchase the power that is generated by our waste energy facility. And they can do that in a couple different formats that, you know, we can agree to. The first would be a standard offer contract, which is the same as our power purchase agreement today, but at a much lower rate for energy sales and a much, much lower rate than we would see for capacity payments. The difference in that capacity payment rate really has changed over that 30 years because originally, that cost avoidance calculation was based on a fossil fuel plant because that was what was being built 30 years ago. Now, those plants are being replaced by gas turbines, which are much cheaper, and hence the cost avoidance is much less. So, our capacity payments would be much less also. Second option, and if we were to enter into that standard purchase agreement or standard offer agreement, that would probably be in the neighborhood of 20, 25 years fixed that we would have to remain, and we would have to actually meet capacity requirements of that standard offer, which would probably be north of 90% availability for our plant. Now, the reinvestment that this board's made into that facility, we're pushing 100% availability for what we have. But as that plant continues to age over the life, when you look at 20, 25, 30 years out, 90 years or 90% would be a difficult number to achieve, so we would really need to ascertain whether that's where we want to be. Our existing power purchase agreement has a 70% requirement, so much easier for us to meet. And before you made your reinvestment, we were around 75%. So, you can see that there would have to be some evaluation and conscious decision and thought being put into that. Second option would be an as-available rate option, which would really fix the rate that would be available to us for energy sales, and it would be energy sales only. There would be no capacity payment made in that as-available rate. We would just be generating power and being, getting our revenue collected on what was being put out to the grid. Now, Duke has said they would go as far as two years to lock in our rate, so at least we'd be able to do some budgeting with that. But that's as far out as we would go, and we wouldn't necessarily be locked into that. We could enter into an asavailability rate at any time and then move to a standard option. I mean, that standard option is there with the county having a qualified facility, that we can enter into that at any time. It doesn't have to be right at the end of the expiration of our power purchase agreement. So, we have some flexibility in the options that are there. The next option would be to actually broker our power out on the grid. Lee County actually does that now, but in our situation and what we've looked at through our consultants, it really is not as favorable as just selling our power to Duke because we would have to pay Duke a transmission fee to get our power somewhere else to somebody that we would be brokering our power to, and at the rates that we're receiving, it just doesn't make sense to do that. So, I don't see that as being a viable option at this time. But we will keep it on our list of options, and we'll continue to revisit that as the expiration date nears. And then the last option that we're looking to pursue is possibly a legislative change that would allow us to actually net meter or wheel our power that's generated at our facility to other county facilities. Now, we can do that to facilities that are on our site or adjacent to our site because we can distribute that power, because we wouldn't be putting our power on the Duke Energy transmission lines. But to make that power or make that power available to other county facilities, we would have to use Duke's lines, and right now, legislation doesn't allow us to do that. So, we're going to be pursuing a coalition of other waste energy counties or So we're going to be pursuing a coalition of other waste energy counties or counties that generate power through waste energy and pursue that in a legislative manner. And we expect that we would probably be coming back to the board and giving an update later as that coalition has stood up and we would move forward, probably in the next legislative session. Now, to put that into some type of scope, you know, right now, your county buildings, depending on what they are, whether it's an office building or, you know, well, it can be deemed as a manufacturing facility like a water plant or maybe even the airport, you know, you could be expending anywhere from maybe nine to 13 or 14 cents a kilowatt hour. We would be able to generate at our facility something less than that, probably in the neighborhood of five to six, that we can make available to the county facilities. So we would cover the costs of the waste energy facility. And then you would also see a reduction in your general fund or enterprise fund energy or energy consumption rates. So it is a, probably the most attractive option if we're able to get some legislation in our favor to make that happen. So we'll leave that as an option for something that we would pursue. Now, we do have some opportunities to help close the revenue and expense gap that we're going to anticipate when we get to the end of the power purchase agreement. Increasing our tipping fees. Our tipping fees prior to FY '20 really have not increased since the waste energy facility was put in place. Our tipping fees remain the same. I think at that time, it was $37 or $38 a ton. But we've had tipping fee increases to kind of help stabilize what we're going to see at the end of that power purchase agreement of annual 6% increases for fiscal years '20, '21. And again, that's what's going to be proposed for fiscal year '22. Every year, per county code or county ordinance, we have to do an annual review and the Technical Management Committee, the TMC, would make a recommendation to the county commissioner or county administrator to bring to the board for consideration at your budget process.
Who's on that technical committee?
They're made up of several municipal partners, the private haulers. So you would have St. Pete, Clearwater, and then you have group cities that would represent, I don't have them memorized, but like Allsmar and whatnot.
But good representation from...
Very, very balanced representation. And then, like I said, municipal partners or private haulers and then also someone from the county. You actually make appointments to the to the board or to that committee as well.
So they're fully aware of what's going on and passing all that information onto their...
Absolutely.
Their management teams and commissioners and that kind of thing?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then on the chart there, as you can see, as we continue to increase our rates, we're trying to stay in line with what we we see in, you know, in the area of solid waste tipping fees. And those those communities that actually have a box around them are those that have waste energy facilities. So you can see how Pinellas County fares, you know, as we are today in FY '21 and where we would be in '22, we're certainly below the the average line of what's out there based on what's done in our rate evaluation that was most recently done for FY '22. So in the area of reducing our operating expenses, we're in the process, I say we, the department's in the process of a reorganization to kind of better align our functional requirements and our core responsibilities to match what's in our strategic plan and master plan. We have seen a reduction in FY '21 of two positions just by eliminating some vacancies. In FY '22, we're planning two more reductions. Again, just taking advantage of attrition and we're not going to be, you know, changing our level of service or restricting what we do today. It's just a tightening up and we'll continue to do that and review our programs and as we go forward. We also are looking at the transition of electronics recycling. Right now, we collect them at our HEC III facility, the Household Electronics Chemical Collection Facility. And those are recycled. That comes at a cost to us. It's about $300,000 a year contract just to recycle our electronics. We're looking to go ahead and incinerate those electronics. And we recover the metals that comes out of the facility anyway, and that's what's really going to be recovered out of the electronics. But that's going to take some some work to make that happen and it's going to be a change in attitude and what the public's been instructed to do for a very long time. So we would have to do some stakeholder engagement there and some education before we'd be ready to pull the trigger to make that happen. But again, that's a $300,000 annual cost to, you know, our program, the enterprise, that is really a free program that's for the citizens and the residents of Pinellas County. Another thing we're looking at is enhanced metals recovery. So I think I've talked to you at the last budget session that we had. Right now, the waste energy facility does recover metals and that's in the form of ferrous and non-ferrous. Non-ferrous is your gold, silvers, and aluminums and really the, you know, the the most attractive economically that we can recover. We did a pilot project last year where we found that we can change and add to the existing processes to recover more of those metals because we're finding that we're actually burying those metals in the backyard. We're not collecting, you know, a good, a good amount that's that's left over in our ash stream. So we're looking and trying to make that determination of what that cost looks like. And there certainly is a payback period associated with that. We would be back to the board when we're ready to make that recommendation. Another opportunity that we have is actually the onsite metals cleaning. And this would probably come on the heels of the enhanced metals recovery because if we're able to do enhanced metals recovery, it'll change the footprint of our buildings, which would actually make some more building space available. If so, we we have to send our metals offsite to be cleaned of ash residue before they actually go to the the scrap metal people for recycling. We may be able to do that onsite, saves transportation costs. We may be able to do that onsite where others are going to be sending us our metals like that have to do the same thing. So there may be an additional revenue component with that, but we'll further look at that opportunity as it comes closer. Solar power generation is another opportunity. Right now, our waste energy facility, we have what's called a parasitic load. We take the load to run that plant from the power that's being generated from that plant. And, you know, we generate at any given time, probably in the neighborhood of 65 megawatts. And that's because 15 megawatts of the 80 that is our maximum is being sent to the facility to actually operate itself. If we're able to do solar power generation, you know, we'd be able to supplement that power and that would be more power that would be going out to the grid as opposed to using it internally for our uses. So we're looking at either a solar array, a big solar array on the the big pond that's outside of the the solid waste camp, solid waste campus. We're looking at possible rooftop and/or side slope arrays on the closed areas of the landfill, on the slopes around the landfill. So we'll continue to be looking at those as well.
Question?
Yeah, hold up one second. Commissioner Justice?
Yes, sir. Thank you. And what's interesting about doing our own power, and if you're not the right person, just you can tell me that, but we've talked for years with Duke about a solar array somewhere. I know at one point, they wanted Toy Town. I think we offered them some other property out here somewhere in this neck of the woods. Is that, is Toy Town's, you know, we were, when we put out RFP several years ago, we brought the, we got a sports park idea, we got an office park idea, and then we got a solar park idea. Kind of update us a little bit if that's still in the discussion anywhere.
Well, from a solid waste standpoint, we're kind of the the remediators and monitors of the property. We provide access and whatnot. I know that there's interest in that property. From a solar power standpoint, I know Duke has stepped back from that because they have found other properties in the state because they're looking at building and generating power like on a very large scale. I mean, probably three times the size of Toy Town. 750 acres, 1,000 acres or whatnot. So I don't believe they're interested in Toy Town anymore. They said they may be interested in something with a floating array that we talked with them about maybe a couple of years ago. But whether they are or not, we would, we would probably move forward with that anyway. It just seems attractive for us to kind of make that happen. As far as the other interests in the property, I'm probably not the best person to talk to. It's probably the Economic Development Staff and/or the Convention and Visitors Bureau Staff.
So we have a, we're going to be bringing a report talking about the property. Several of those items are being discussed. A lot of them have been put on hold because of the pandemic and so kind of reevaluating what the interest is, what the options are, and we'll be bringing that to you.
Okay. It's it's one of those things, it's just always hanging out there, that that property and and, you know, sometimes you wait for the perfect thing and the perfect thing never comes when you end up doing nothing, which is...
Yeah, I think I think that was the issue on the solar. I think they're looking at larger sites, but we can accommodate more than one function out at that site. And so, but this year has changed. The whole idea about the sports and what's happening with that and really is there the demand and what's going to be in the future. So some of, a lot of that stuff got put on hold and they're trying to kind of, all right, are we, are we ready to talk about it again or not?
Okay. Thank you.
So that wraps up the first portion of the update for the power purchase agreement. Is there any more questions on that before we move into recycling?
Yeah, good. Not seeing any. Welcome, Commissioner Steele. Good to have you here. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So as we move into the the recycling portion, I just want to give a little bit of of background on what we're seeing in the recycling or what we have seen in the recycling community. In 2018, China restricted the acceptance of recycled materials to less than 1% as far as contamination rate, which is those items that are in the recycling stream that cannot be recycled. This really eliminated China as a as a market to the US as well as many other countries wanting to send their materials to China. And in July 2018, as a reaction to that, Solid Waste hosted a recycling workshop and tried to be a little bit proactive where we invited other municipalities, FDEP, our private haulers and processors, academia as well as as well as staff. And there were three objectives of that workshop. It was really to identify the pressure points, discuss potential solutions, and identify any action items that could be taken, you know, straight from that workshop. And at that time, there were three major action items that came out of that, which was really the creation of three teams. The first team was to look at recycling contract standardization. The second was specifically looking at glass recycling. And the third was actually looking at enforcement for recycling collections. And until recently, all these teams remained active and reported up to the Pinellas Partners in Recycling, we call them PPR, who is actually a subcommittee to the TMC. In 2019, the recycling markets were severely depressed. And at that same time, processing has become greatly increased and it really created a little bit of conflict between the private collectors and processors and the municipalities and was putting a lot of pressure when recycling contracts were coming due. And late that year, Safety Harbor, the city of Safety Harbor, actually announced that they were going to suspend their recycling operations and send all their collected materials to solid waste to be incinerated. So when we got that word, the county commissioner and I, we met with the city of of Safety Harbor and kind of talked through that because, you know, the the staff's concern was it would set a bad precedence. While we probably could handle the city's recycling, if other municipalities were to jump in on that and send us all that recycling, it would over, overextend the the capacity that we have at the waste energy facility and effectively would be landfilling recycled materials, which probably would end in a result with public outcry and wouldn't put Pinellas in a very good light. You know, as a whole, the county, enterprise-wide, not just the county as an individual municipality, but all the municipalities combined, you know, we recycle probably 50% of the solid waste that's 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 being generated. That's a giant number. I mean, of that 50%, 2/3 of that is construction materials that normally would not come to the facility for disposal, but that 1/3 that would come to the facility, again, would overextend the capacity that we would have. And when you put that in perspective, if all that material was sent to the landfill, it would really shorten the life of your landfill by about 25 years. So sending recyclables to the to the solid waste incinerator just for that reason alone goes against, you know, the master plan goal that's been approved by the board of zero waste of landfill by 2050. That would put us in a, you know, almost a 180 out from from that direction. So after meeting with the city, we came back to the board in early 2020 and the board effectively gave us the direction, which is on the the slide right there, which is really to to look at the market research for the mark, for the commodities in the markets, do a waste composition study of our recycled materials, and actually do look at the feasibility of of constructing and operating a regional loan MRF. So I'm here to report back on what the TMC has provided based on that direction. So on behalf of the TMC, Solid Waste contracted with RRS to conduct a domestic and international market research of mixed recycling commodity markets with the primary objective to understand what markets exist for clean, non-contaminated recyclables. In July 20, the results were taken back to the TMC and discussed, and then they were again, were updated in January 2021. So the results from January 2021 are what are being represented here on the slide. And as you can see, the chart represents that the materials market during 2020, that calendar year 2020, were already down by more half, by almost more than half entering into that year. And it's also interesting to know that the markets really weren't repressed by COVID. If anything, the markets are actually going up over time during 2020. So there remains a market for all the markets that are listed there. Secondly, a recycled materials composition study was performed by Kessler Consulting and all 24 municipalities were asked to participate in that in that market or in that material study. 18 of the municipalities did so. And this chart actually depicts the collected recycled materials by weight, which is, you know, your vertical line. And then on top, there's a number that represents the contamination rate by municipality as what was effectively seen during that composition study. And the municipalities were all provided their information, they paid to participate, and they were given this information to take back, that they can actually review, you know, the results themselves. Just as an FYI, the municipalities either collect their own recyclables or they'll contract out for the collection of the recyclables to a private hauler, or in some cases, there's a hybrid of the two. And then in unincorporated areas of the county, that's an open market. So private haulers are licensed to collect municipal wastes and required to provide an option for recycled collections in the unincorporated areas.
So the higher the contamination rate, the less desirable that product is...
Correct.
For our waste energy plant or...
No, these, those materials don't come to our facility at all.
Right, I get it.
They're moved from the waste stream. But a higher contamination rate makes it harder for the processors to process, which would really increase your cost. Or they have the ability to, in some cases, reject loads if the contamination rate is too high. It really would depend on the the contracts that they have with the municipalities.
And that's been, that's been some of the tensions that you were talking about between the haulers and the cities?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And again, for a little bit of background, all the MRF processing right now is done through private entities and there are five private MRFs in total that support both Pinellas and Hillsborough Counties. So based on the results from the market and composition studies, there was unanimous TMC recommendation to develop standards that would maximize participation, minimize the contamination, which should maximize the revenue that we would receive from recycling. Now, again, you know, there's a misnomer that recycling is a is a is a revenue generator. It is not. I mean, it hasn't been for a very long time. You know, we do it because it's the right thing to do. We don't want to be, you know, burning or landfilling recycled materials. We want to keep that out of the waste stream as much as possible. And it's a market. I mean, generally, your your oil prices drive your recycling market in some form or fashion. You know, when virgin materials become more expensive to manufacture or used for manufacturing, then recycling comes back and is becomes more attractive. Could it be a revenue generator? Yes, at one time it was. Could it be again? It really depends on the market. But it shouldn't be that that drives whether we should be recycling or not. So when you look at materials recovery facility or the MRF, there are benefits to doing so. There would be continued diversion... There would be continued diversion of the recyclables from the, the municipal solid waste stream, which again reduces the capacity it's being placed on the waste energy facility and certainly gets out of the, uh, the necessity to landfill any recycled materials. And at an initial evaluation by staff, there would be reduced overall processing costs if there was a municipal-owned MRF doing that work. There'd also be reduced plastics in the waste energy facility. And if you've been following lately, that's been really a key topic at the federal level, um, just, uh, where they were actually talking about not being able to burn plastics in a waste energy facility. That would be very difficult for us to, to, to do. So we're keeping an eye on anything that's happening at, at that level. And then a new MRF would employ state-of-the-art optical devices for material separation, which really would help drive yield, which would provide you with the best revenue available in the market that, that you're in. So currently, staff has looked at two opportunities. We looked at one, whether we would construct a MRF in Pinellas County, and the second, whether we would be able to send our materials to Hillsborough County, who is also looking at constructing a MRF. And representing there are just some initial costs, uh, numbers, uh, that go along with those two options. So option one really has a higher initial capital cost, $30 to $40 million, and then a processing cost of $60 to $70 per ton. That's if we were to build it in Pinellas County. The option two would be sending our materials to Hillsborough County, which has a less initial capital cost because we're not building the MRF. We would have to build a transfer station instead. Processing costs would generally be about the same in talking with, with Hillsborough County, but there would be some administrative fee on top of that. And then there would be transportation of our materials to Pinellas, uh, to Hillsborough County, which is about $15 a ton. So your, your initial cost would be less, but your processing costs are going to be more. So it comes down to really an economics, you know, uh, process that we would need to go through, uh, to determine what would best suit, um, Pinellas County and, and its citizenry.
And, and just out of curiosity on that, 60 to 70 versus 84 to 105, obviously tonnage has a big component of that. Any sense of that and how, how long it would take to recover that? How many years to make up the difference in the capital?
Uh, there is a capital cost component of that. It would probably be in the neighborhood of 10 to 15 years...
Okay.
For your initial capital cost.
Yeah.
Um, and just to give you a, a, you know, uh, an estimate on tons that we're looking at countywide for Pinellas, we would be looking at about 60,000 tons for, uh, single family and multifamily. And when talking with Hillsborough, their facility is about, is going to be sized to be about the same. So very much equal in the, in the, in the tonnage for, for recycling in both counties. Now, I will tell you that Hillsborough County is much further along. They're actually out on the street, uh, for a municipal MRF. They're looking to actually construct the facility and then would, they would be looking for a third-party operator to provide the equipment and operate that facility over time. So that's, that's what they have actually out on the street today. So I'm in constant contact with their solid waste director. You know, they know our situation and they're building it for 60,000 tons for their operation. And they said they would be able to accommodate Pinellas tonnage by just going to a second shift. So they're able to accommodate our tonnage. That's why we have looked at it.
What kind of acreage are we talking about for a facility like that? Do we have, is that an issue that we're, we're concerned about?
It's, well, we would need to find a location, whether that would be on our site or somewhere close. It does not have to be on our site because recycling isn't considered municipal solid waste. It's recycled, it's clean, but it could be on, on our property. The facility itself would probably be in the neighborhood of 75,000 to 85,000 square feet for a 60,000-ton facility. So that's the kind of footprint that we would be looking...
For the building itself, but then all the, all the circulation would probably be...
Uh, you're probably looking at something in the neighborhood of three acres, maybe something like that.
Additional, additional on top of...
No, probably...
Because there's two here you're talking about, just for the facility.
Well...
You said 85,000 square foot facility?
For, for the processing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's about a couple acres on its own.
Yes.
So you're saying another acre or another...
Yeah, because these are pretty much drive-through type...
Okay, okay.
Dumping and whatnot.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. We would also need to look at the demand. I mean, like I said, we have five private processors that are out there servicing now. Does it make sense to have more than one municipal MRF? We kind of need to walk through that and we, we as in staff haven't had time to kind of pull that, uh, string. We need to look at that a little bit further and we would probably need a little bit consultant help to kind of make that happen. So it's something that we're going to be looking at, uh, as we move forward. And, you know, following this portion of, of the discussion with the TMC, they came back with two recommendations that you see there. The first is they're looking for staff to finalize their evaluation and come back to them in September with a recommendation on whether option one or option two is the most valuable. And then coming back, they would make their recommendation, which would most likely be brought back to the board, you know, at a, at a date later than that. And then number three, if you were to make a recommendation or a decision to move forward, we would need some type of flow control to build that facility, whether it's a transfer station to send it to Hillsborough or actually build that processing facility. So they see the need that there would have to be a countywide recycling ordinance to mandate recycling in the reci, in the residential and multifamily, and they would also like us to consider commercial. Now, residential and multifamily would come to the MRF that we would be talking about. The state statute precludes us to require, uh, that material coming to our facility. The board has the ability to mandate recycling, but it doesn't have the ability to mandate what materials and where they go, just that it would be recycled in the commercial area. So that's just the way the, the statutes are currently written. So next steps, uh, we would be looking at standardization. We would have to coordinate with the stakeholders to develop a standardized list of recycled materials that would be stemming from the market and the, and the forecast that we have available at that time. Develop standardized messaging and education to the public, uh, the citizenry, those that are going to be, you know, taxed with, well, tax is a bad word, would be required to recycle. And then the PPR has already, uh, created templates for standardized contracts, uh, that would be able to be made available to, uh, the municipalities that have recycling contracts now. And then we would have to do some type of implementation, uh, schedule, which would accommodate those recycling contracts as they're coming due, um, because we recognize that, you know, they're not going to simply be stopped like a light switch and then start it and do it. It had to be something that would have to occur over time. And then the actual discussion with, uh, the municipal-owned MRF, next steps, we need to develop the demand on whether, uh, more than one municipal MRF in the region makes sense. We would need to solicit service possibly from other municipalities outside the county or other counties outside of Hillsborough. I mean, they're already going to be doing this, whether we, we agree to participate or not. We're going to have to finalize our costs. We're going to have to finalize the location and then some type of schedule around that. Develop a pro forma. We're going to have to confirm that we have, uh, available funding to make that happen and then come back and present to the TMC in September. And then lastly, we're going to have to look at the recycling ordinance. I will tell you, our staff is currently reviewing the existing ordinance and it's almost a major rewrite. It hasn't been touched in a very, very long time. So we would need to know based on the timing of the MRF, whether we can incorporate that recycling ordinance in the current rewrite of what we're doing, or that may have to happen earlier just to keep the timing and make it, you know, uh, something that meets the appetite of the municipalities for the struggles that they're seeing right now. So we'll have to, to kind of balance the timing of what is happening there. So that really ends my update on the recycling side, so...
Not very complicated issues there.
No. No, I like the, it was different than just building air conditioning in my previous life.
Uh, yeah. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions. One, let's say we, we wanted today, we were all gung-ho to build our own MRF. Where would that $40 million capital cost, where would we anticipate that coming from?
It would come from the solid waste reserve fund.
Okay. And then the ordinance that, uh, we were talking about, mandatory residential recycling, uh, a lot of our contractors do, does, well, I guess, I don't know, I'm in a city. Our contractors, do they offer in every corner recycling now?
Yes. In the unincorporated areas, the, those that are licensed to collect municipal solid waste have to offer...
Okay.
Recycling. It's just not mandated. So you have some that don't participate. When you go to required recycling, everybody's going to have to participate because we're going to need that flow control to keep that facility running as, as efficient as possible.
But you mean the provider is mandated to offer it, but if, I mean, the resident, individual resident is, there's no way to really require them to do that?
Not right now. It would, it would have to be a, uh, the ordinance would require that. They would get a container. Now, can we say that they're actually putting that stuff in that container? No, but we need to make sure that they're not putting recycling in their normal trash container. That we can enforce.
Okay. Thank you.
You're, you're exactly right, Commissioner. This is a sensitive area.
Very sensitive.
But, but, but more so, I mean, it, you're, you're, they're capable, the small haulers are capable of doing it. Probably the bigger sensitivity is if you did large contracts and you forced everybody into the same thing. You've got a lot of homeowners associations that have it under their contract. And so that's where you've got to get some of the input in terms of the way in which you design that, because a lot of communities have individual contracts and so it would, it would change the way that they're currently doing business. So we're, we're keenly aware of some of those sensitivities and, and how that would be done. And that would also really hold true if we ever decided to franchise, um, because that's particularly sensitive because of some of these longstanding ways in which they've set up, um, collection in their community.
Yeah, I think, I think the carrot is much better than the stick as it relates to enforcing residents. I found that, you know, you, you get a lot of, you get a lot of participation, especially if there's a lot of, of strong educational component as it's tied to our waste-to-energy plant and long-term viability of, of just getting rid of our waste. You know, you don't want to, you don't, we extend the life of that and therefore our own independence for generation or two or three, if, if they do it the right way. So I, I think a lot of education, you'll find a lot of, of, a lot of cooperation, so...
100% correct. If we ever had to, I mean, if we were to send all our municipal waste out of county now, it would be that $105 per ton as opposed to the $40 a ton that we charge today because we're not doing the recycling now.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. Any other questions? What do you need from us today? Nothing other than...
This was just an update.
This was an update. There's, there's a lot, there's a lot going on, you know, and these are some pretty big decisions. And so we wanted to, you know, have you see it a couple of times before we ask for a decision and direction and get your feedback. So certainly things like that, carrot versus stick, we, we knew it, but, you know, it's good to hear your, what your thinking is on that also.
Yeah. Well, yeah, thank you for, for the work and, uh, look forward to a lot more interaction on this topic. This is important. Non-sexy stuff, but it's important stuff. I, I, you know, I kind of like talking about it. So anybody else before we break for lunch? Lunch is here. I've been told we can't have a working lunch, but we'll have a lunch. So we'll be back at quarter to one. How's that? All right?
Thank you.
We're going to start back with Penny Four Affordable Housing Program Review. And before we get started, Della, thanks for making arrangements for lunch today. That was awesome. It's always good to be able to take a short break and get some food in our system. Go ahead and get started, County Administrator, Mr. Burton.
Today, we're going to have an update on Penny Four Housing Program Review. We've learned a lot over the last two rounds. Remember how new this is. But Carol Strickland and Bruce Bussi are going to provide an update and some thoughts in terms of how we can improve the program.
Good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here. This is my first presentation to the board in my new position. Be gentle with me.
Welcome. It's good to have you here.
Thank you. When we initiated the Penny Four Affordable Housing Program, we had made a commitment to an ongoing review and to coming back to the board with an evaluation. And that's why we're here today. Over the last few months, we've gone through a rather detailed review process, which included some partners. It included Kathryn Driver from the Housing Finance Authority, our real estate consultant, Tom Kennedy from the Westport Group, who gathered feedback from our developers, Housing and Community Development Staff, the County Attorney's Office, and the Assistant County Administrator. So we're here today to share that with you and thought we would start with just trying to summarize the strategy behind the Penny Four Affordable Housing Program. And truly, our goal is to serve those in greatest needs by producing the maximum number of affordable units over 10 years, to really have an impact with this money. And we certainly, during the course of the Housing Summit and working with our housing compact partners, have seen that there is a tremendous need for housing affordability in Pinellas County. So we really want to make sure that these funds are used for the maximum impact. And the priority for those funds are the viable projects that offer the most affordable units for the lowest income levels. Also, though, within that strategy is looking at mixed-income projects and workforce housing that help us achieve that goal to add more homes that are affordable to our local workforce. So just a little bit of background. The Penny Four Program expands on our previous successes of our land acquisition program and now includes that capital-infrastructure economic development nexus projects where we're able to support vertical construction for workforce housing using our Penny Four monies. Of course, we have Resolution 1906, which outlined the board's intent for use of those funds, and then went through the process with all of our partners, the municipalities, to develop the guidelines that we use and that were approved by the board in December 19. And as part of our review, we looked at whether any change to those guidelines would be needed. And we do not feel that those guidelines need to be updated. They're serving us very well. So our evaluation had really two components. One was looking at the program itself, how we're operating it, how we're reviewing applications. And then we also spent some time on the policy discussion, the strategy that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, our commitment to produce those affordable units, and the role that mixed-use, mixed-income, and workforce housing projects play within that strategy. And I'm going to really talk about both. But overall, in our review of the program itself, we have had a very positive market response. By widening our net, attracting new players to the table, by working directly with the development community, we've really seen new players come to the table. We do have a few things that we wanted to discuss with you, though, in terms of how we evaluate projects and the review process itself. So this is the project evaluation. We do have a scoring process. And one of the things that I wanted to emphasize to you was that scoring is designed in a way that it favors those projects that produce the affordable units that are consistent with Resolution 1916. The points are awarded for the lowest income served, and that will not change. But it also allows consideration of all projects and kind of that balancing act of the other policy goals that are inherent in those guidelines, the location, the type of development, the scale of the development. We're not proposing any major changes. However, there are a few areas where we'd like to refine and adjust the way that that scoring matrix works. And you can see on this table here, those areas are outlined in red. So it's per-unit subsidy, leveraging, and the development type, rental versus ownership. Right now, we do have a consideration of per-unit subsidy. We want to refine the way that we look at that in our scoring so that the projects that require the highest per-unit subsidy receive less points, essentially, so that we're leveraging those projects which require less subsidy and favoring those. We're also looking at leverage. That's really been a discussion of how are we most effectively using those monies in both sets of circumstances, in 100% affordable and in the mixed-income and workforce housing projects? So we're trying to refine the way that we look at those to make sure that we're awarding those projects where we're getting the best leverage. And then finally, we did want to make a couple of adjustments for homeownership projects. We've not seen a lot of those, but we do feel that that's certainly a viable part of the mix and wanted to make sure that we weren't unduly disadvantaging homeownership projects. So reducing the amount of points awarded for rental housing and then really encouraging homeownership projects for the 80% of area median income and below. The other thing that we talked a great deal about was providing clarity and transparency. And this was in part based upon the feedback that we got from the board when we came to you in January to award the Round 1 projects. The board asked us some very good questions about specifics on how we evaluated these projects, what their financials were, questions like the developer fees. So we wanted to make sure that when we come to you with recommendations on projects, we've got clear metrics and a clear picture of their financials so that you can really evaluate those projects in some detail and that it's also clear to the public of how we're making these decisions. So we've developed some additional metrics. And here's an example of how we might do that analysis. These are a couple of projects from Round 1. What we did is we compared 100% affordable project to one of our mixed-income projects, one land-assembly, one capital-construction, and really looked at things in terms of ratios of the funding that's being provided to the development cost overall, the per-affordable-unit subsidy versus the subsidy from all sources, the amount of per-unit subsidy, and the amount of per-unit development cost and developer fees. So those are the types of metrics that we'll use in our evaluation, but most importantly, that you will have available when you're evaluating projects and making those commitments on funding. One thing that we heard from our partners, from the Housing Finance Authority, was the issue of timing. We went into the implementation project with the idea that we would have essentially competitive rounds. We would open up an application period. It would be open for a period of time, and then we'd evaluate a group of projects. And one thing that we learned is that didn't work very well with the idea of project readiness. We were trying to rank projects based upon their readiness. And what I mean by that is, are there other financing sources in place and do they have the entitlements in place? And because of the complexity of capitalizing these affordable housing projects, it was kind of forcing developers to come into an application period without some of the funding commitments, and it was impacting their ability to score well. What we're intending to do going forward is have a more open application period where we'd be able to, prior to them making an application, provide more pre-application assistance and support, both by working with the developers and with our partners, the municipalities that are also developing these projects. And then it would also allow us to review projects individually to expedite that project approval, rather than reviewing a round of projects, really working with individuals that are ready to come forward, have some financing commitments. Some examples might be low-income housing tax credits are available during certain times of the year, bond money. And we really want to sync up Penny Four monies, our affordable housing monies, with that availability of other capital. And so the implication of that is we would bring projects to the board for that conditional approval when they're ready, when we've completed our evaluation, and if the timing aligns with their other funding sources, rather than making them wait for a round to be completed. One of the things, though, with this review process, just as we've done now, is we would make a commitment for ongoing review and would come back to the board for any adjustments as needed in the future. So the policy discussion. We had a lot of discussion about the strategy, what role mixed-income and workforce housing projects play. We had a lot of discussion about the strategy, what role mixed-income and workforce housing projects play. And we certainly, during the course of the Housing Summit and working with our housing compact partners, have seen that there is a tremendous need for housing affordability in Pinellas County. So we really want to make sure that these funds are used for the maximum impact. And the priority for those funds are the viable projects that offer the most affordable units for the lowest income levels. Also, though, within that strategy is looking at mixed-income projects and workforce housing that help us achieve that goal to add more homes that are affordable to our local workforce. So just a little bit of background. The Penny Four Program expands on our previous successes of our land acquisition program and now includes that capital-infrastructure economic development nexus projects where we're able to support vertical construction for workforce housing using our Penny Four monies. Of course, we have Resolution 1906, which outlined the board's intent for use of those funds, and then went through the process with all of our partners, the municipalities, to develop the guidelines that we use and that were approved by the board in December 19. And as part of our review, we looked at whether any change to those guidelines would be needed. And we do not feel that those guidelines need to be updated. They're serving us very well. So our evaluation had really two components. One was looking at the program itself, how we're operating it, how we're reviewing applications. And then we also spent some time on the policy discussion, the strategy that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, our commitment to produce those affordable units, and the role that mixed-use, mixed-income, and workforce housing projects play within that strategy. And I'm going to really talk about both. But overall, in our review of the program itself, we have had a very positive market response. By widening our net, attracting new players to the table, by working directly with the development community, we've really seen new players come to the table. We do have a few things that we wanted to discuss with you, though, in terms of how we evaluate projects and the review process itself. So this is the project evaluation. We do have a scoring process. And one of the things that I wanted to emphasize to you was that scoring is designed in a way that it favors those projects that produce the affordable units that are consistent with Resolution 1916. The points are awarded for the lowest income served, and that will not change. But it also allows consideration of all projects and kind of that balancing act of the other policy goals that are inherent in those guidelines, the location, the type of development, the scale of the development. We're not proposing any major changes. However, there are a few areas where we'd like to refine and adjust the way that that scoring matrix works. And you can see on this table here, those areas are outlined in red. So it's per-unit subsidy, leveraging, and the development type, rental versus ownership. Right now, we do have a consideration of per-unit subsidy. We want to refine the way that we look at that in our scoring so that the projects that require the highest per-unit subsidy receive less points, essentially, so that we're leveraging those projects which require less subsidy and favoring those. We're also looking at leverage. That's really been a discussion of how are we most effectively using those monies in both sets of circumstances, in 100% affordable and in the mixed-income and workforce housing projects? So we're trying to refine the way that we look at those to make sure that we're awarding those projects where we're getting the best leverage. And then finally, we did want to make a couple of adjustments for homeownership projects. We've not seen a lot of those, but we do feel that that's certainly a viable part of the mix and wanted to make sure that we weren't unduly disadvantaging homeownership projects. So reducing the amount of points awarded for rental housing and then really encouraging homeownership projects for the 80% of area median income and below. The other thing that we talked a great deal about was providing clarity and transparency. And this was in part based upon the feedback that we got from the board when we came to you in January to award the Round 1 projects. The board asked us some very good questions about specifics on how we evaluated these projects, what their financials were, questions like the developer fees. So we wanted to make sure that when we come to you with recommendations on projects, we've got clear metrics and a clear picture of their financials so that you can really evaluate those projects in some detail and that it's also clear to the public of how we're making these decisions. So we've developed some additional metrics. And here's an example of how we might do that analysis. These are a couple of projects from Round 1. What we did is we compared 100% affordable project to one of our mixed-income projects, one land-assembly, one capital-construction, and really looked at things in terms of ratios of the funding that's being provided to the development cost overall, the per-affordable-unit subsidy versus the subsidy from all sources, the amount of per-unit subsidy, and the amount of per-unit development cost and developer fees. So those are the types of metrics that we'll use in our evaluation, but most importantly, that you will have available when you're evaluating projects and making those commitments on funding. One thing that we heard from our partners, from the Housing Finance Authority, was the issue of timing. We went into the implementation project with the idea that we would have essentially competitive rounds. We would open up an application period. It would be open for a period of time, and then we'd evaluate a group of projects. And one thing that we learned is that didn't work very well with the idea of project readiness. We were trying to rank projects based upon their readiness. And by what I mean by that is, are there other financing sources in place and do they have the entitlements in place? And because of the complexity of capitalizing these affordable housing projects, it was kind of forcing developers to come into an application period without some of the funding commitments, and it was impacting their ability to score well. What we're intending to do going forward is have a more open application period where we'd be able to, prior to them making an application, provide more pre-application assistance and support, both by working with the developers and with our partners, the municipalities that are also developing these projects. And then it would also allow us to review projects individually to expedite that project approval, rather than reviewing a round of projects, really working with individuals that are ready to come forward, have some financing commitments. Some examples might be low-income housing tax credits are available during certain times of the year, bond money. And we really want to sync up Penny Four monies, our affordable housing monies, with that availability of other capital. And so the implication of that is we would bring projects to the board for that conditional approval when they're ready, when we've completed our evaluation, and if the timing aligns with their other funding sources, rather than making them wait for a round to be completed. One of the things, though, with this review process, just as we've done now, is we would make a commitment for ongoing review and would come back to the board for any adjustments as needed in the future. So the policy discussion. We had a lot of discussion about the strategy, what role mixed-income and workforce housing projects play. We had a lot of discussion about the strategy, what role mixed-income and workforce housing projects play. And we certainly, during the course of the Housing Summit and working with our housing compact partners, have seen that there is a tremendous need for housing affordability in Pinellas County. So we really want to make sure that these funds are used for the maximum impact. And the priority for those funds are the viable projects that offer the most affordable units for the lowest income levels. Also, though, within that strategy is looking at mixed-income projects and workforce housing that help us achieve that goal to add more homes that are affordable to our local workforce. So just a little bit of background. The Penny Four Program expands on our previous successes of our land acquisition program and now includes that capital-infrastructure economic development nexus projects where we're able to support vertical construction for workforce housing using our Penny Four monies. Of course, we have Resolution 1906, which outlined the board's intent for use of those funds, and then went through the process with all of our partners, the municipalities, to develop the guidelines that we use and that were approved by the board in December 19. And as part of our review, we looked at whether any change to those guidelines would be needed. And we do not feel that those guidelines need to be updated. They're serving us very well. So our evaluation had really two components. One was looking at the program itself, how we're operating it, how we're reviewing applications. And then we also spent some time on the policy discussion, the strategy that I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, our commitment to produce those affordable units, and the role that mixed-use, mixed-income, and workforce housing projects play within that strategy. And I'm going to really talk about both. But overall, in our review of the program itself, we have had a very positive market response. By widening our net, attracting new players to the table, by working directly with the development community, we've really seen new players come to the table. We do have a few things that we wanted to discuss with you, though, in terms of how we evaluate projects and the review process itself. So this is the project evaluation. We do have a scoring process. And one of the things that I wanted to emphasize to you was that scoring is designed in a way that it favors those projects that produce the affordable units that are consistent with Resolution 1916. The points are awarded for the lowest income served, and that will not change. But it also allows consideration of all projects and kind of that balancing act of the other policy goals that are inherent in those guidelines, the location, the type of development, the scale of the development. We're not proposing any major changes. However, there are a few areas where we'd like to refine and adjust the way that that scoring matrix works. And you can see on this table here, those areas are outlined in red. So it's per-unit subsidy, leveraging, and the development type, rental versus ownership. Right now, we do have a consideration of per-unit subsidy. We want to refine the way that we look at that in our scoring so that the projects that require the highest per-unit subsidy receive less points, essentially, so that we're leveraging those projects which require less subsidy and favoring those. We're also looking at leverage. That's really been a discussion of how are we most effectively using those monies in both sets of circumstances, in 100% affordable and in the mixed-income and workforce housing projects? So we're trying to refine the way that we look at those to make sure that we're awarding those projects where we're getting the best leverage. And then finally, we did want to make a couple of adjustments for homeownership projects. We've not seen a lot of those, but we do feel that that's certainly a viable part of the mix and wanted to make sure that we weren't unduly disadvantaging homeownership projects. So reducing the amount of points awarded for rental housing and then really encouraging homeownership projects for the 80% of area median income and below. The other thing that we talked a great deal about was providing clarity and transparency. projects play in the overall strategy of providing housing affordability in Pinellas County to meet the need that we know is coming. And wanted to use this opportunity to articulate, both for mixed-income and workforce housing, some of the lenses that we're looking at those projects through. One thing that we've seen in our experience with the projects that's come in is mixed-income projects do allow us to leverage the subsidy that we're providing through Penny Four to produce additional affordable units. One way to look at that is if there's a market rate project that could develop without any affordable units, by putting in some Penny Four money, we're able to buy down those rents, leverage the private capital investment to produce overall more affordable units. Earlier, I also mentioned some of the other policy objectives that we've really seen as examples in some of the projects we've been reviewing, particularly in St. Petersburg and Clearwater, is it's giving the opportunity for the affordable housing dollars to make a real impact in the community redevelopment areas, to not only provide housing affordability, but to make meaningful investments in CRAs, underserved areas of the county. And then also, there's that overall economic development aspect, that nexus aspect, that providing funds for workforce housing, which are those units up to 120% of AMI, we're supporting economic development by making sure that the labor force has adequate places to live and supports our employers. As I mentioned earlier, it's bringing new developers to the market. Market rate developers are working with our real estate consultant. They would not necessarily have considered be, including affordable units, but because of the leveraging that we're able to provide, we're seeing those developers, both locally, regionally, and really nationally, show interest in investing in Pinellas County. And finally, there are other benefits to mixed-income developments. It's a strategy that we can use to strengthen neighborhoods and improve overall prospects for low-income families as a result of living in those mixed-income projects. And certainly, we heard that from the board's discussion in January, that there is kind of a recognition of the role that these mixed-income products can play. The question has been asked of why are we not funding only the 100% affordable projects? That is our priority. Our scoring prioritizes those projects. But if we elected to do that, we do not feel we'd have the impact that we're seeking to have on the need that we know lies ahead. It would result in fewer net units built over the long term because of the complexities of funding 100% affordable projects. An example is the low-income housing tax credits, which are highly competitive. You might see six or seven applications from a single county. They all may score well. They go into a lottery, and at most, one project per year would be funded. So because of the scarcity of capital for these 100% affordable projects, there's that idea of impact and leveraging. And then also, there's this desire to produce the maximum number of affordable units and those mixed-income products. By buying into some of those market rate projects, we're able to produce more affordable units. So our strategy is to evaluate our success over the long term, not on a project-by-project basis, not even necessarily on the first round of projects that have been committed to in Round 1. But as we go, we want to continue to provide you that feedback of, are we having the impact? Are we supporting the projects that have the greatest amount of affordability? And are we achieving those other policy goals that I mentioned? But we're committed to serving those in need by producing the maximum number of affordable houses. Just a quick update for you on our progress to date. You did see the Round 1 applications in January made a conditional commitment to four of those projects with 412 units, committing a little over $11 million. We have completed our review of the Round 2 applications. Unfortunately, four are not ready to move forward because of that project readiness, because they're working on their other financing sources. We did have one withdraw because they received funding through another source and no longer needed the money, and one was determined not really to be a fit for the affordable housing dollars. We did close the Round 3 applications at the end of March. Those are under review. We did get 10 applications. I did want to note that five of those were reapplications. Four of our developers from Round 1 came back in. One of the applicants for Round 2 made some changes to their project and came back in. But we did receive five new development proposals. So with that, our commitment is to housing affordability for now and into the next generations, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for the update, Commissioner Gerard.
Yeah. Can you give me an example of a homeownership project for incomes under 80% of AMI? Because, I mean, they have to be able to pay a mortgage.
And typically, the way that you would do that would be by providing down payment assistance. So, but it is very difficult at 80%. You're absolutely right because of the cost of housing.
Yeah, because then you, well, and you couldn't control the cost for them, I don't think, unless you still owned the land or something. Anyway, I'm not even sure that Habitat does 80% or less. I mean, I know they have to qualify for the mortgage, which in most cases is going to be over their heads if they're...
It's difficult to do.
Okay. Just wondered if you had any examples locally.
Commissioner Flowers?
Thank you very much. Commissioner Gerard, I can't remember the name of the organization, but it's a Christian organization that builds homes. They've applied a lot.
Covenant. Is it Covenant?
I can't remember. They've applied a lot for CDBG money from the City of St. Pete, but they build homes for persons 80% AMI. And because of the way, because of the volunteer time and the donation and whatnot, it really reduces the cost of the home so that persons, but again, they build so infrequently because of how they build. So that's the only one that I am fully aware of locally that does that. First of all, I want to say thank you for your presentation. It was very informative about the process and where we're going from here. I also heard you talk about just equity when we're looking at program dynamics for affordable housing. So I want to thank you at least for bringing that to the forefront. My question is, because in the city of St. Petersburg, there are very few pieces of land that are large enough to build 100 units and above. The properties that we have had that would be able to suffice for that, they're under development right now, which is wonderful. And several of them, some of them have partnered with Pinellas County and have provided a number of units, others with the City of St. Pete in their funding, and provided 50-plus units that are affordable within a market rate construction project, which is really good. So since land is so scarce, there are like pockets where maybe you could get four units here and two units there, whatever. Is there the opportunity for a project that might be located, locating its units on several different lots, or would they have to apply for each individual project? For example, going down 34th Street and that would be about 3rd Avenue. I had someone inquire about that, and they could probably get units, rental units. And then going further up, there's another, you know, lot. And so their question to me was, well, what if we want, just we want to do one project? The units are going to look the same, but they're going to be located, you know, at different addresses because that's how we can get the volume that we need. So I don't know if we did that, or if that would be considered.
The board is probably aware that the minimum number of units for this program is 10 units, and that is on a per-project basis. One thing to keep in mind, though, is this is only one source of affordable housing dollars that we have available to us. And what we do is, if we're aware of projects, we're able to, you know, work with individual developers that are coming forward to match them with an appropriate source. So these, you know, smaller infill projects are probably not Penny Four, but might be considered for other funding sources.
But Commissioner, to that point, we did take out, because before you, it was incentivizing you to have larger projects. Now it's going to look at a per-subsidy, per-unit subsidy. So then it doesn't matter whether it's small or big. It's can you get the dollars down to make, to stretch our dollars? And so that was a key change that they made as part of this review.
And that's fabulous because that, again, speaks back to equity when we're talking about, you know, wanting to do a dynamic project in some of our most needy communities, but not having the big landmass, or quite frankly, maybe the financing to be able to do something like that. So that's really good. Thank you. But I just wanted to ask the question because someone who I really enjoyed meeting with them and talking with them, and when they asked that question, I was like, ooh, you know, I don't know. Let me ask. So thank you. Appreciate that.
Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here today. A few questions, really. We talked about the Resolution 1906 as the goal of 40% of the dollars that we spend to be spent on the 60% number. And I'm sitting here thinking, I don't really know hardened concrete. Do we know, if we had a gazillion dollars today, what are, how many families are in that 60%? How many families are in the 80%? How many families are in the 100%? If we could build everything we needed today, how many units would we need to build? Do we have that number?
We have done some of that analysis as part of the Housing Summit. I don't know that we broke it down as finely grained, as you're saying, with each individual units, but that type of analysis is available, and we could bring that back to the board.
My thinking and my question is, because obviously, the 80% number is going to be much easier to hit as far as a joint project and to have it. But have we made the decision, or do we recognize that we, if we want to hit, and again, how many families we have, that we want to hit that 60% target, we just know we're going to have to spend more and make that decision? All right, on this project, it's not going to be 250 a unit. We know we're going to spend 290 a unit, or whatever. Have we had that kind of thought process as we're evaluating projects?
The per-unit subsidy is certainly something that we look at. The way that we prioritize the projects that serve the lower income are through scoring them to their advantage because they serve the lower incomes.
Okay. All right. And then, and then the 10 unit, I don't know that I had heard that. That's an interesting number. That's a very small unit number to be the minimum because there are parcels throughout our community that are, you know, might fit that. Obviously, that would change your construction costs dramatically, and that gets us back to the other formula. But anyways, it's very interesting numbers. And then the last thing is, are we looking at, and I know this is like one more thing that our team is not necessarily have the time to do, but are we looking at parcels of land that are zoned differently now? And I know we talked about this a little bit, I think, Barry, but, you know, no one's going to build that big box, replace that Kmart that closed. And so that lot is never, I don't think, is ever going to be retail again. And so are we looking at, you know, working with the owner and developers and things like that to do some of those kind of zoning changes and land use changes?
You know, our program is set up for somebody to submit, so they're doing the parcel acquisition and creating the development proposal. In terms of the land use issues, I have discussed this with Whit Blanton regarding that. He's going to use a consultant to go to reach out and work out what the, mainly, we talked about industrial lands and not changing that zoning, is it is still appropriate. So he's going to take that charge as part of his efforts, hire a consultant to be able to kind of reevaluate that with our cities on whether there's appropriate changes in looking at land use.
Commissioner Seal?
I have two questions. It goes back to Slide 9. And it has to do with the developer fee. I see a big disproportionate amount. And doing the math on Project A, the developer fee would be about $2 million. On Project B, the developer amount would be about $2.8 million. And how did you, do they change according from project to project? Is this your ceiling? Or, I'm trying to get my arms around. I understand that people have to make a profit, but when it's public dollars that are being invested in it, I would think that that profit would be a little less.
And that's a, that's a good question, and that really outlines the difference between kind of your market rate projects and the way they're financially structured and the 100% affordable. In the 100% affordable products, we take our lead from the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, which has standards. And that's, you know, the 15% is within that standard because that is the actual profit that that affordable housing developer will see. In a market rate project, there's other means that profit is derived over time, income, return on equity. So it's, it's a little bit not of an apples-to-apples. It's really, I think, we wanted to highlight that because the board did ask about that in January, and we wanted to be transparent that, yes, for those 100% affordable, there is a standard.
Okay. And so, so then my next question is, the person who's doing 100% affordable, are they, is that a guaranteed amount that they get, or are they still at risk of not earning that?
Well, that number comes from their pro forma. So that's the, what's the allowance, essentially. And that is what's used in underwriting of the project. I probably don't know enough about the real estate transaction to say whether that's a guaranteed return, though, but we can provide that information to you.
Okay. Just kind of curious about that. And then my next question is, the two projects that were withdrawn or ineligible, which ones were those and why?
One found financing through another source, through the Housing Finance Authority. So that one was Queakside Manor.
And where is that?
I believe it's in Clearwater. And then the other one that was deemed to be not eligible was Oasis Acres because it was, they applied for capital nexus dollars for vertical construction but didn't meet the criteria for workforce housing because they're serving the lower AMIs. As the board is aware, though, they're no longer proceeding with that project, so essentially it's no longer under consideration for funding.
It is still under consideration?
It is no longer under consideration.
Oh, no longer. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Commissioner Gerard?
Yeah. Along that line, Greenway Lofts, I thought that had already been funded. That was in Round 2, and it didn't, what? I know there were some issues like that, but...
That was funded and placed into the land assembly, into the trust. The monies that they applied for were the nexus dollars for capital construction. At this point, they're still looking at their financing for the project, and they identified the penny monies as a potential source.
Okay. And to go back to Commissioner Flowers' question about parcels that are not contiguous, I mean, that's an intriguing question, actually, if you're looking at, you know, duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes.
Grani units.
Yeah. Grani, well, yeah. And that's not, I'm not sure I heard your answer, whether that's something we would look at as a, as a whole project if somebody came in and said, I've got four parcels. I want to do 20 units on four parcels. I've got four parcels, I want to do 20 units on four parcels, or something like that.
I think it's something we got to look at. I don't know the answer to that. I hadn't heard that before. So I think staff needs to...
I just think it's an interesting idea.
Yeah.
The reason I brought it up is because, you know, I'm a housing junkie, but in a way, when it comes, but just up north, because especially when you're looking at areas that are so close to larger cities and they have land concerns like we do. And so the way that they are able to make some things work so it's profitable and worth everyone's time is to consolidate the projects even though they're located in different areas throughout. So that's why I brought it up because it seemed very intriguing to me. It seemed like a good idea. It seemed like an opportunity because it's infill housing.
Right. It's that missing middle we talk about.
Right.
So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm sorry.
The other comment I wanted to make was looking out for, so I was driving down Park Boulevard the other day. And there's some huge parcels, one in particular. And I thought, and I drove by and went, oh, wow, apartments. You know, it's, I don't know how many acres that is, and one right across the street. But maybe we should be keeping our eye, I mean, we have this person that we're working with on industrial lands, right, or about, no, about green spaces, or whatever.
Well, land acquisitions is a little bit different than, for open space than, than affordable housing projects. And, you know, and the key there is that, you know, we've tried not to own property and take on the liability associated, especially some of the projects we've had that have had issues. So it would, so one, there'd be a liability and a risk there. But two, we'd have to completely redo on, from a staff standpoint.
Yeah, I guess I'm not suggesting that we purchase it, but that we, you know, have a little file folder that has those kind of projects, or those kind of parcels in it with a little bit of information. I mean, clearly, the developers that are local are going to know about those things and probably have looked into it, but the ones that aren't may appreciate the assistance, especially if we're talking about land acquisition funds.
Well, Commissioner, our, our real estate consultant, the Westport Group, is essentially providing that service. So they, they have awareness of what's on the market and trying to match that up with potential developers.
That's all I was seeing. Yeah.
And just a couple of questions. Again, thank you for the report. So on these developments, like this, take a normal develop, a regular market-based development, and if you wanted to introduce affordable housing, we have a density bonus that can be attributed to a, obviously, assuming everything can fit. Are those factored into these mixed-income projects? I mean, are they, when we talk to a developer about buying down some of those units to affordable, do we introduce the idea that with more affordable housing, you can get increased density? And does that play into the equations at all?
Not at this point. At this point, most of our mixed-income projects are within the municipalities who have their own set of incentives. So it's not something that we, as the county staff. What we're doing, though, over the course of this year is we are looking at our affordable housing land development regulations and we can certainly look at how we can use that to leverage and how it might work to incentivize some of these, these penny projects. So thank you for that suggestion.
But Commissioner, also remember that the, the projects have to be, you know, ready. And so they should have been through a, if they're in a municipality and gone through the zoning process, to look at the, the density bonuses and things like that. So that's, that's what some of the problems is, is some of the projects aren't ready. And so we can look at that, but I think that most of them should have been...
Well, I wouldn't want to assume that these municipalities, all of them have the same density bonuses that we do. But I do think it's worth, you know, we talk about some consistency in, in some of the other topics that we've talked about today. And so maybe that's an area that we can focus on. I mean, I did bring this issue up to a couple of cities that they didn't have the density bonus with affordable housing. And again, we're missing opportunities to maybe leverage with that developer on a mixed-income project to give him more units to help us buy down the price. I mean, it's just, I think we got to look at every, every opportunity.
No, you're exactly right. And if they're not, then they, they should be. And that could be part of our housing compact to encourage that.
Yeah. And the other thing, I just wanted to make sure it was clear on, you brought up, I'm trying to find the, there was some terminology you used that I just wanted to make sure it was clear that, you said something, that benefits for economic development was under policy discussion on page 11. Benefits for economic, I'm not, I'm assuming we're not talking about tapping the economic development side of the 4.15%. Where's the, when you say, when you introduce economic development there, we're not talking about taking money from the others, the economic development side. No, this is all still under the affordable housing side.
You could get into mixed-use developments where you have a retail and commercial and things like that. So that would be the only case that you may get an intermingling of funds.
I know that's been suggested by some of those folks that it, that present to us, but I just...
Oh, yeah, it's been suggested, but no, this is...
Okay. I just want to make sure that wasn't, that wasn't slipping into the conversation.
No.
And then the only other question I have is just more of a practical one. So if we have this mixed-income development and it's 400 units and 50 of them are affordable, how do we track that over time? And how long are those units good for as far as that affordable rates as it compares to, say, a fully, a full 80% under AMI development? How do we track those in practical uses? And how long are they good for?
If I may, I'd like to ask Community Development Division Manager Bruce Bussey to speak to those details.
I thought I was getting off the hook today. Good afternoon.
Yeah, that, yeah, I, yeah, thank you.
Good afternoon.
Hi. Good to have you.
Basically, any project that we fund, whether it's 40% of the units, 100% of the units, land assembly dollars, construction dollars, we have an annual monitoring requirement. We often require the developer to hire a third-party monitor to do that, and then we review those reports. So each year, either a third-party monitor or county staff will go out, look at their rent rolls, monitor the units to ensure that those affordability set-asides are being met. For your example, 40% of the units have to be under 60. We don't, you know, unit one, unit two, unit three, but at the total, they have to demonstrate that they're meeting that minimum requirement.
And what if they don't?
If they don't, then they're out of compliance. We'll document that in a letter and we'll give them X number of days, usually 30 days, to come into compliance, to respond to what they're going to do to come into compliance. Typically, what that means is the next unit that becomes available, you know, let's say they need 20 units that are affordable and they only have 19, the next unit that becomes available, they're obligated to rent to a household that meets that income limit. Ultimately, if they would not come into compliance, our mortgage and loan documents give the county the authority to foreclose. We've never got to that situation, but that's the enforcement mechanism that is put in place.
And these two types of developments that you showed examples on here, there's ones of complete mixed use and the other one, are they, are there, are there similarities in the two as far as evaluation of how long they, how long that it has to remain affordable? Or?
There's a difference in whether or not the land is purchased. If the dollars are utilized to purchase the land, one of the values there is that's a permanent affordability. And so we essentially use a long-term, 99-year ground lease and the affordability requirements are in perpetuity. With construction funding, similar to more of our other programs that are funded with state and federal dollars, there's a minimum timeframe. We're using a 20-year timeframe for these nexus funds that would go into a workforce housing project.
So that's something I think we need to be aware of, too, because, I mean, that's, that's less than a generation. So as we continue moving forward in time, it's even going to be more difficult. And if we're losing some of those along the way, clearly, I think that needs to be looked at as one of those decision points for us. I mean, I, I mean, I like the idea of mixed income. Don't get me wrong. I think it's a great way to go. I just want to make sure that we, if we have that for 20 years, we have another one for 100 years. I think it's an issue that we need to at least consider.
Yeah. And it's challenging to put the value on that over time.
It is.
Because when you think about the apartments in 20 years, they're going to need renovated and updated as well. But that is part of our evaluation where you're...
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Anybody else have any comments, questions? Anything else, Barry, on that point? Okay. Thank you. Moving on. We're going to skip right over number nine and go, no, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, I'm kidding. Go to Transportation Trust Fund.
I'll ask Kelly Levy to come forward. And we have a presentation today regarding the Transportation Trust Fund and seek your guidance in terms of kind of a direction forward. I've talked to you individually. We've talked about this for the last couple of years in terms of what was occurring in the Transportation Trust Fund. But the pandemic has accelerated those discussions. And so without delaying, I'll let Kelly get started and we're going to kind of tag-team this discussion with the presentation. Go ahead, Kelly.
Yes, thank you. And I'd also like to thank, before I get started, Abigail Lloyd, she's new with the county. She either fortunately or unfortunately was assigned to Public Works and we threw her right in the deep end of the pool and she has been outstanding. And so none of this would have been possible without Abigail and her sharp eyes and running every different scenario that I asked her to. I also want to say a big thanks to Jewel and Dawn Kroll because they were very helpful in helping us kind of map some of this stuff out. So as Barry mentioned, we're here to kind of give a presentation, an overview of what's going on with the current state of the fund. We're going to highlight a couple of program areas funded by the trust and some of the level of service challenges we've been experiencing, review alternatives and other factors that we considered to address the imbalance in the fund, and then a recommended path forward and some next steps. So this, this graph basically is our current state forecast for the Transportation Trust. And the analysis does assume the extension of the ninth cent, which expires in '27. But based on our current projections, we are expected to have a $3.3 million deficit by the end of fiscal year '22, which does include drawing down the remaining fund balance of approximately $6.4 million.
And I guess if we, we should start, for the purposes of anybody watching, the Transportation Trust Fund is what we use to mow our, the grass, maintain our sidewalks, you know, clean ditches and culverts, and, you know, all the maintenance of our, of our infrastructure around our roads. So just for the purposes of kind of defining what, what we're talking about.
And so as Barry just discussed, you know, we utilize the trust fund to deliver a variety of services focused around maintaining our critical transportation infrastructure and programs. And some examples of those include our sidewalk program and our mowing services. And so our sidewalk program is one that has been, you know, we've kind of having a lot of conversations about how we can improve in this area. We have a significant backlog. And what that means is, as a citizen calls in, a problem is identified, a staff member goes out, determines what work needs to be done, and that's put in a queue. And so that's what I mean by backlog when I say that. And that backlog builds at a rate of about 10% a year. So we have a, we also have a high demand for replacing deficient sidewalk panels. And we're, our current service levels are significantly below that demand. For mowing, we have both in-house and contractual services. Our contract services, they typically work the large corridors, including median, shoulders, and county-owned facilities along those corridors. And then our in-house crews perform slope mowing along drainage channels and along rights of ways in neighborhoods and adjacent areas. These are, these areas are kind of less attractive to the contractors who like to mobilize in, in big corridors. We did try to get an apple-to-apple comparison with some of our partner counties. It was very difficult, just given the nature of how they contract out work and how we contract out work. But generally, Hillsborough and Pasco, the numbers are there for their contractual services. Their contractors do, again, their large corridors. Pasco County stated that they're really, their 26 cycles are really in their high-visibility corridors. They use their in-house crews primarily to row rural areas and they just do rights of ways. So they do that at about seven to nine cycles per year, but it's very different because we don't really have those rural corridors. You know, our, our mowing is either on, along large arterials and collectors, or it's in neighborhoods. So as I mentioned, we're looking at that funding gap and looking at various alternatives to how we might address that gap. We are looking at an estimated $10 million per year in that annual funding gap. We will exhaust the fund balance in fiscal year '22. You know, our expenditures are outpacing our revenue and this will continue as hybrid and electric vehicles become more popular, less gas is purchased, and the fact that the gas taxes are not indexed to price. So over the last several years, we've been looking at projections for the Transportation Trust, and Barry mentioned this, we saw this pattern, but it has been accelerated by the pandemic. Our, our service levels are not meeting expectations and our municipal partners are, are having very similar challenges in funding these critical services. And so our team worked together to evaluate several alternatives and combinations of alternatives to address the challenge. You know, one we looked at, do we simply decrease our expenditures to match the revenue we have? When looking at this, it was kind of a death by a thousand cuts. If we cut every little program area, this is all maintenance services. We couldn't do that without extreme impacts to level of service. And then we'd be having the same conversation the next year. There, it was not a long-term strategy that got us any more than one year.
And to give you an example, the, at the end of '22, it's $3.3 million behind. The next year, that, that would grow to $9. some odd million that very next year. And so the, the gap just, you know, it gets exacerbated each and every year. And so the amount of cuts necessary to match the revenue was, you know, I've heard from you over since I've been here about these two service areas, about sidewalks and mowing and the insufficient level of service that we're providing. That would only grow. We would have to look, you know, at a, which is scenario number two, at a general fund subsidy, which, again, you know, this was set up to be able to be self-sustaining. But obviously, you can see the impact of that. So, good point.
Yeah. So as Barry mentioned, that, that alternative two was to look at subsidizing these trust-funded services with general fund. And then we also looked at the third scenario, which would be the expansion of the loft by five cents, the local option fuel tax. Even that all by itself would still require significant reductions to services and, and level of service impacts. And that is because the, that five cents, that one through five cents cannot be utilized for the same services that the other pots of money, the, the county, the constitutional, the one through six, the ninth. They have different uses. And the one through five has some restrictions on it that the others don't. But it would create, create some revenue for capital-related initiatives like sidewalks. A lot of our sidewalk work is, is actual replacement. And so that is a capital-eligible activity or additional work on our ATMS system.
And what she was referring to, it, it has different language on its uses. So you've got different section of your sales, of your sales tax and, or your gas tax, and it has different authorizations for it. This is more capital. So some of the things that we're funding from maintenance are for capital under the current, we can push that up into, you know, the new nickel. And then, but you can't fund maintenance out of the, the final five cents.
So the, the current one through six and ninth has certain parameters, you're saying?
Correct.
And the additional one, five cents would have different?
Yeah. All of the, all of the pennies before these five cents allow for maintenance. And, and that's what we use, that's what we use the Transportation Trust for. We use it for maintenance. We maintain, we do potholes. We maintain our bridges. We mow, we trim trees. We maintain everything within the right-of-way with the Transportation Trust. And then we have the ninth cent that, that we use to build the ATMS system, but also maintain the ATMS system. This, this is very specifically called out in the statute and it says maintenance is not unauthorized use.
So I have been injured on a sidewalk in such and such a place, and twice it has been inspected, and now I'm told it will be another year before it is repaired. And so this, this, I guess this is what this resident wrote in and told, told us, which puts this county at... which puts this county at risk. And to me, the fact that you just said it was capital, there's no reason we can't be using other sources of capital. And I know that we have priorities in our penny, and that's capital. But to me, this is a critical area that is, I mean, I'm almost embarrassed to, to, like, I don't know what to say to this person. You know, yeah, you're right, and, and put my head down, but that's just ridiculous. And it is just one of those things that we've talked about, and yet we complain about other, we worry about other liability things on the table that are miniscule in comparison to this one. And so to me, I don't know what we're waiting for.
Look, Commissioner, this is gonna be part of a budget strategy for this year's budget, okay? And so we're, we're packaging this together, we're talking about one specific thing, but the backlog we have in sidewalks, 100% agree. I was shocked at the backlog. And maybe I just didn't get around everything the first two years, but I, this is a modified, she had like 40 slides when, when, when we met, and they went through level of service for all the different areas. And they talked about the response times and things like that, and, and I completely agree with that. So we want to, we want to do more than just prop up the Transportation Trust Fund. We have to address this because it, it's coming right at us, but I agree that we need to put money in to get us caught up. And we're looking at strategies to do that as part of this year's budget.
Yeah, it's like a, it's like a badly paved road where, you know, it's like you spend, if you don't do it soon enough, it becomes a bad, bad, bad money, because then you have to rebuild it from the, and when we don't fix these things, and we get sued, and we have to pay up, to me, it's wasted money that we could have otherwise spent fixing those sidewalks. So I'm glad, and you put it in the strategic plan this year when we met back in, in January. So that was appreciated, but I think it's, we gotta get there before this even comes, before this passes.
So here, we're talking about sidewalks and maintenance, and that the, like repaving is another area. Now, that's on the penny side, okay, the penny for Pinellas side. But I 100% agree, we should never be reconstructing a road, because it's, you're spending six times the amount than if you'd just repaved it at the right time. But you, but you've got that, but if you've got that gap, you gotta somehow get caught up before you can properly maintain them. And we've never put enough money into it to be able to get there. Again, that's an area where it's gonna take us more time, but we need to develop strategies to where we're using money smartly.
That's really what I was trying to say, that was said better. I was trying to make a comparison with that, because it really is bad money if we're not fixing our sidewalks. It hits us in many, many different ways.
Yes.
And quickly, Commissioner Justice, sorry about that.
That's right, thank you. Could you, if you have a graph or a chart that shows us which penny can be spent on which topics?
I, actually, we do in the presentation that we did for Barry, so how about I get that to Barry, and he can share it with you?
You can have the 40-slide deck presentation. It's just, I knew we were gonna run out of time today.
No, it's, it's, I mean, it's interesting. I, I knew there were some limitations. I didn't know it was, it makes me think of the bed tax, about which penny can be spent for which thing.
And that's as confusing as all get out.
So, yeah, I'd like to see that, and then just, I always think back to, and we've known this day was coming for a while. But I, I guess I thought a few years ago, when we did the surface water fee, that was taking, that was alleviating some of this fund's shortfalls, but it doesn't seem like it's alleviated it longer, as, as for many years as I thought it was gonna alleviate it, I guess.
When we, Bill just
Kelly, the one, one of the reasons you're gonna, you're gonna, you're not gonna see it in this slide deck, but a big hit this year was a big hit to the Transportation Trust Fund. People stayed home, okay? That cost us, what, $5 million? Three? $3 million, okay. So we, we took a $3 million hit right off the bat. Now, you know, in, in some areas, if you, you know, if you're doing less, well, then you cut your cost. Here, same, same miles of road, same number of sidewalks, same, so costs don't go down, but our revenue source to pay for that service went down. And so we've got in our chart, and what she's talking about, a projection that it, it will slowly tick up. But that's, that's a direct impact that we felt from COVID.
No, absolutely. No, my, my point was that when we, we were paying for some of these projects and maintenance out of, or, or surface water projects out of this fund, correct?
We, we were, and you are absolutely correct. When we adopted the, the Surface Water Fund, all, all the stormwater maintenance-related work in the unincorporated county is now paid for out of that funding source. However, we still have drainage systems like on McMullen Booth Road and other corridors that meander in and out of cities that we have to maintain, and we cannot use that funding source for those areas. So we are still, there are still some. It is not, when you look at all the services we provide for the Transportation Trust, the stormwater piece of it is miniscule in comparison to everything else. But we still have some because of those areas outside of the unincorporated area.
Okay.
All right. So some additional factors that we looked at included looking at, you know, a statewide view of gas taxes, who's doing what. And we found that, you know, Pasco, Manatee, and Sarasota are imposing the full 12 cents. 33 other counties across the state are also doing the same. Hillsborough is currently sitting right where we are at seven cents. And then we had the conversation about user fee versus property tax. You know, the conversation is, if you're using the roads, then you should help pay for the roads. And gas taxes are a good example of those user fees. The additional benefit of the gas taxes is that other people buy gas here, and, and they help contribute to that fund. Whereas property taxes, you know, are, are implicitly on the property owners here in the county, and therefore shift burden.
Kelly, I know that there's an increasing, a, a number of, of electric cars, you know, forecasted over the next 10 years. What, what percentage of our cars now, because by doing the user fee, they're not getting hit with the fees. Property tax would get everybody. It wouldn't get our visitors. So I was just curious, do we have a sense of what that number is, percentage, 10%, 5%?
I'm not sure, but I, we do have a meeting with, for Pinellas, I think, next week, and I, it's like kind of a staff meeting that we have periodically, and I can, I can ask them if they have any information on that.
And keep, keep in mind, you know, there's a national conversation about the way in which you do gas taxes, and whether you should shift to other types of sources because of that. Whether, whether it gets traction and they get something done on that, who knows? But there's a lot of discussion that that needs to occur as we see alternative vehicles coming.
You know, I certainly like the idea of sharing with our visitors and neighbors, and, because they all use it too, so.
Yep.
All right. So again, when we, when we pulled all this information together, you know, we came, there wasn't, there wasn't one magic answer to this question. It was a compilation of, of different recommendations that allowed us to get, you know, get to a place where we could move forward. And that did include the, the expansion of the LOFT utilizing the same split that we have with the one through six, which is a 60/40. And, and that, you know, you see the total there, 54 million over, over that time period. It would, estimates about 6.8 million in, in '22, and then again, over 9.3-plus million thereafter. That would be the county piece of that. So as mentioned, the, the one through five allowable uses are different. And so that's, you know, that's a really important point that we, we, when we were developing this plan, we had to say, what, what can be, what monies can be used where, you know, but it does allow us to redirect and replace qualifying uses from other pots and revenues if we were to implement that piece. We're also recommending several non-recurring funding opportunities. We just had the conversation about the sidewalk backlog and a subsidy to address that backlog. There's also the opportunity to replace that lost revenue that Barry mentioned, using American Rescue Plan Act funds. And that may be available to us for several fiscal years. But it can't be used for fund projections. It has to be based on actual losses. Then there was a, about $6.25 million transferred from the Transportation Trust into capital, the Capital Project Fund in FY '19, that paid for some road resurfacing, the Bel Air Road Complete Streets design, as well as the improvements to the Park Boulevard Bridge. And so we could repay the Transportation Trust from that transfer. And then, of course, we, I brought back, they renew the ninth cent in FY '27, which is set to expire. So when we incorporate these recommendations into the trust fund forecast, the general fund subsidy, the ARPA revenue, LOFT expansion, and redistributing expenses to qualifying funding sources, we can cover expenses for these critical programs and address the sidewalk backlog, which is critical to pedestrian safety. It also reduces our liability and risk. And these alternatives also buy us more time, you know, to evaluate longer-term strategies. So at this time, we are, we're not asking for approval to move forward with that LOFT expansion. We, our, our goal here is to really to move forward with the inter-local agreement and get those signed by the cities, so that if you do decide to move forward, that we are positioned to act.
So what happens is, the, one of the things come, that came up on us quickly as we started putting budget together is the difference between, we knew we had on talk October 1 to actually, for, to ask you to increase the, the gas tax. However, the inter-local agreements have to be in place by June the 1st. That really pushed the timeline up. Now, the, the inter-local, all that does is, is sets the parameters that if you increase the gas tax, how that money would be distributed. What we'd be proposing is that we keep it the same. One, we don't have time to renegotiate inter-local agreements, but that we keep it the same with municipalities. So we get 60%, the cities distribute 40% based on population, and that we ask them to act. We need 50.1% to have that back to us by June the 1st. I have had discussions with the cities. I, they're all in the same predicament that we are, and I don't believe you're gonna have any problem with, with receiving that. So that's the first piece. We need to have that in place by June 1st. We then have time to act for you to officially consider during the budget process if you want to increase this or not.
So we, you know, we have our budget, Public Works Budget Workshop in May, on May 19th. And at that time, we will be presenting all the details. We'll have extensive level of service information about all of our program, and program information. You know, we'll be prepared to have all of those dialogues about all those programs that, that you've brought up and are, are raising concerns with. At that point in time, we, we would be scheduled to bring back the inter-local agreement for your consideration on May 25th. And then you would consider an ordinance, whether or not to move forward with that additional LOFT in the June-July timeframe. And then, of course, we need to notify the Department of Revenue by October 1, so that we could begin collecting revenue by January 1 of '22.
I know there was some thought circulating that, that that 60/40 split might be a little bit low. I know that's not what we're considering this year because of a tight timeframe.
Yeah.
But I would certainly be curious over the next months, months ahead, that, to understand why that rationale was thought of. I'm sure there's some actual numbers that we can see, miles, you know, taking care of roads, and, you know, miles of county roads that go through cities and that kind of thing. But I'd just be curious as to what that number really is. So anyway.
Commissioner Seale.
Well, I can tell you, it became a political effort by Mayor Rick Baker to change what had previously been the formula from, it was six, it was 75/25. And because he rallied the other cities around, it became a pressure that it then became 60/40%. And so, just a bit of history.
Yeah, we were just curious, even if it was 75/25, if that was the more correct amount, what that was based on. I mean, I have no idea.
Well, I think one question I would have is, with absent an inter-local, you reimburse the cities based on their expenditures for the last five years. So one of my questions would be, what are they spending?
Compared to what we're spending. It might be pretty
It might be horrific, or it might be not as horrific as we think. Because for instance, and I was gonna bring this up later, Barry has mentioned in the presentation that we could use general fund. And I brought this up before, which is that, at least for Clearwater, they've had an ordinance on the books for years that basically takes general fund just for resurfacing of roads. And so a certain percentage has to be spent on the general fund for resurfacing. So whenever you're ready for questions, I also have some more.
Bill?
I just want to share in response to the question about, sorry, in response to the question about the statutory formula that would be reverted to if there was no inter-local. When we analyzed that, I guess it was probably two or three years ago, it was more about a 50/50 split. Yes. So much stars disadvantage based on that statutory formula.
Thank you, Bill.
Did you have anything?
That's the end of the presentation.
Did you have some more questions? Go ahead, Commissioner Seale.
So if we did the 60/40 split, you mentioned in the presentation, it's like 54 million. Instead, the county's share, if it was 60/40, would only be 32.4 million. And so before we consider this, I would like
Hold on, hold on, maybe a clarification. That may be our 54 million.
My off?
The 54 million is based on 60/40.
That's based on just what collections for the county would be?
That's assume, that's how much we would actually collect before distribution over that period of time.
Before distribution to the, to the city?
No, no, that would be our share.
Our share, okay.
Okay, because in your background, it shows that five cents would be 9 million a year.
Yes.
That's just the county's share?
Correct.
Okay.
Over that period of time. So 9 million a year over that period of time, except the first year is actually only a portion of it, because the first year in FY '22, we only have three-quarters of the year that we have collections.
Okay, thank you, Bill. The other question then that I would have is, you know, we have the penny for a reason, and I would think that the penny would be able to be used for some of these expenses. I know it has to be for a life cycle, right, Jewel, of five years or longer?
That, that's one of the things that keys into the definition of infrastructure in that statute, but it's not necessarily just five years, although frankly, most of our infrastructure is gonna last longer than five years anyway. But essentially, yes.
Okay, thank you. So then, I guess
Hold up, Karen, hang up. Barry wanted to respond to that real quick.
It, it can be used from the penny, but we are in the middle of cutting current planned projects out of the penny, because we have more projects than we have money for. So it would, it would push the problem over to a different area.
About prioritizing.
Yeah, anyway, I, if we are going to look at this, I would want a very detailed budget of how the monies are gonna be expended, and what benefit it will give to the public. So we have to make that story if that's what we're gonna be considering. And are we also thinking, and I don't think we can do this, you know, because when we were talking about the sales tax before, we talked about trying to augment PSTA's budget. But I don't think we can use the gas tax for that.
No.
Okay.
No.
I just wanted that out there.
But I think your point about, we, we, we have a good history of use of penny, and we told a good story, and the voters voted for it. So we kind of have, even though we're the ones that are voting for it, to be able to tell that story to our residents, what we've used it for, what the benefits have been, and, you know, what we plan to do with it. It's gonna be very important.
And, and we, we plan on have, this is the first piece of the discussion, when we have the budget discussion, I'm gonna have specific strategies in terms of taking some of the general fund reserve and applying it to sidewalks, help us get caught up. So it just won't be one, we're not asking for just this, but a more comprehensive strategy to where we better provide this level of service. And so we will have, have that type of information.
And one question I had asked Barry was, and I've talked to Jewel about it before, because we've had trip and falls on sidewalks. You know, do we have a dollar figure that can be attributed to accidents and lawsuits that we've settled on trips and falls?
Yes, we do.
We do.
Yeah, and part of, you know, just talking about sidewalks, I mean, we talk about the backlog, but the, the challenge that I've been looking at when we were developing the plan was that, you know, we've, we've put some money to it a few years ago. you know, we've, we've put some money to it a few years ago, but there was never anything to stop the backlog from keep, from continuing to build. So we can, you can throw all kinds of money at the backlog, but if you don't stop the backlog from building, you're not going to solve the problem. It's a Band-Aid. And so that's, we developed a sidewalk, a comprehensive sidewalk strategy that has different levels of service, very similar to the stormwater plan, that allows us to decide, you know, what we want to do going forward.
So just real quick, I know, if you go out and replace a panel, that's a capital item, and it's certainly longer than five years.
Correct.
If you go out and use a, you know, sander or grinder to, that is obviously not.
Correct.
That would be more the maintenance side, right? But a lot of our issues are that.
Yeah, about 90% of our backlog is replacement.
Okay.
Yes.
But the rest of it's just the grinding. So most of it will be the, okay, thank you. Any other questions on this? Yes, Commissioner Justice, sorry.
Thank you. Do we, and I know because it's, you'd have to decide what date you were going to set, but if our tax was indexed, like the state tax is, what would our gas tax rate be today? Do you?
Yeah, we...
I know that it would depend on when it was indexed.
We did have this discussion a couple, you know, a little over a year ago, but you're right, that's a very good point. The state gas, the state's portion of the gas tax is indexed. And so the loss of money, if you look at it that way, over the years, you know, it would put us in a, a much different position today. But I, I don't know that we have that. I'm looking at Bill, but...
Right, no, I know, it's kind of a, unless you decided, we started at January 1st of whatever year, you can't really, I'm just kind of curious if we had a ballpark, but that's all right.
So what we're asking, I don't need an action today, but if you're comfortable, what I would ask is that you allow us to send this presentation and a cover letter and the resolution, the interlocal agreement, to the municipalities and, and ask for their support. They're not ask, we're not asking them to raise it. They're asked, we're asking them to agree to the formula that we would use if you decide to raise it, and, because we have to have those back by June the 1st. Otherwise, it's a non-issue. And so that's what we would ask for today's action. We'll bring this back to you at the May budget meeting to begin the discussions of the entire Public Works budget. And part of, again, part of that strategy will be trying to prop up some of these funds where it's simply insufficient.
So really, we're just looking, nodding to you to say, yeah, let's get the interlocal agreement agreed to again, and then we'll talk about it. So since we don't vote, I'm guessing I'm seeing some nodding heads that we'd like those cities to at least acknowledge and accept the existing interlocal agreement.
Correct.
Without regard to whether or not we raise this tax, that's a different issue. Am I, yes or no?
Yes.
Okay, am I?
Okay.
Commissioner Seale?
Please go ahead.
Okay.
Okay. We'll do that.
Yeah, we're not, we're not committing to anything today. We're just saying, yeah, go ahead and do it, but let's, we got a lot of work to do in a short period of time.
We do, thank you. We'll, we'll send that out today.
Okay, what do we got left? Just agenda briefing?
Okay, start on the agenda brief. We have some awards and presentations. You can read those. We've got the state of emergency, citizens to be heard, items from the circuit controller, receipt for filings. The first regular agenda item is item number 15, which is ranking of firms with next track for the purpose of, of a GPS and telematics system. What this does is, we currently have a system that's out of date, and we want to replace it, that goes on all the individual pieces of equipment and cars and heavy-duty equipment in, in the county. So we know where everything is. They also use the data analytics to see if our, we're turning off vehicles, our idle time. We, we can use it for a variety of things to make us more efficient, where equipment is and, and how we're doing. So that would be a, it's a replacement to an existing system, but it's a much enhanced Item 16, delegated items, and 17 delegated items. And item number 18 is an annual updating to the community rating system. This is our comprehensive approach to flood hazard outreach. Any questions? Item number 19 is an award of bid to launch today. This is, it's about $392,000 a year, and this is for maintenance of our roadway, rightaways, ponds, out parcels. And again, this was a certified small business enterprise. So good contract, it's a three-year contract. Item 20 is a ranking of firms for professional engineering services at utilities, and you can see the firms listed, approximately $2.5 million for each of the firms.
Under item number 21, this is a lawsuit, a personal injury lawsuit. It did occur on a sidewalk, but it is not a trip and fall. The allegation is actually that a tree fell on an individual while they were walking on a sidewalk. And under number 22, it's an automobile accident.
23 and 24 from the sheriff's office reports. Item number 25 is a recommendation for, from the Tourism Development Council to approve the Tourism Development Council bylaws. They actually think that we were supposed to pass them, but we didn't. So this would correct that, and also they made some minor revisions to the bylaws.
I also asked if Steve would give us just an update kind of on what was going on with the TDC and how we're recovering and that kind of thing. So we'll have just a, a little bit, which has been good news, but just wanted him to maybe share some of that information.
Item number 26, a resolution approving state housing initiatives partnership, local housing assistance plan for 21, 22, 23, and 24 with, for the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. Item number 27 is an agreement for laboratory testing equipment supplies with Hack Company. This is a three-year contract.
Under item number 28, this is a resolution that I have mentioned to you all before. What this would do is delegate to the county attorney the authority to defend you in all civil lawsuits that are filed against the county, so that these cases would not be coming to you anymore as individual items on your consent agenda. So for instance, the two items that I just discussed earlier in your agenda, and last meeting, there were five of those cases. So instead of those being individual items, you would have one monthly report similar to the delegated log that you see with the county administrator. So that's what I'm asking, is that you give us the authority to just simply report those items to you. The Pinellas County Charter already says the county attorney will defend and prosecute all actions on behalf of the county. So really, I think this authority is already there. This resolution just recognizes that and helps my staff and the risk management staff and others that are involved streamline the process just a little bit. You will still, however, be getting a full log that shows every lawsuit filed against the county. The other thing that the resolution does is it really just recognizes and memorializes the process that my staff uses for other issues. For instance, when we have an emergency action that cannot wait until the next agenda, what I will do is call whoever the chair is, and I've spoken with Commissioner Eggers a couple times this year already, this will just recognize that process where I would call the chair and you would get a, a subsequent report to ratify that action. So that's what I'm asking for you to do under this resolution. Under item number 29, this is really, again, just the placeholder that we have put on your agenda for this year. Should you have any questions about redistricting, but let me go ahead and say, since we're talking about redistricting, that under number 32, you all will not be taking action at your meeting next week to make those appointments. This is something that we had put into the schedule earlier in the year to get those appointments made. However, when we found out there would be a significant delay in the delivery of the census data, we, we need to push that back because the charter says that the redistricting board will meet within 30 days of your appointment of that board. So we don't want to appoint them too early because of that limitation that's in your charter. But again, the item under number 32, we had put that there, thinking that you all were going to make the appointments, and it just did not get taken off the agenda.
Yes, Commissioner Seale?
I thought we were going to select, but not appoint, so that it was done. And then, actually, we had talked at one work session about selecting who they were going to be, but not doing the official appointment till it was closer to the date, so that they were ready to roll. So I'm, that's what I thought we would be doing here.
So is it an issue to select them without appointing the committee, or is it, is it, I mean...
We did have that discussion earlier this year, and, you know, I think this board could, could really go either way. I mean, obviously, I see that there are selections made by each of you individually for your individual appointments already. They appear here in the agenda. It's pretty clear who each of the seven of you have already selected. That would really just leave open the four that the board as a whole will eventually appoint, you know? So I really think it's up to the board if you want to take that step. But the official appointment, we do need to delay until later in the year.
Okay. Did you, yeah, Commissioner Justice?
Well, a couple of things. One, I haven't reviewed the other applicants for those four spots at all, not thinking that we were going to be doing this for weeks, if not months. But two, I know, I think it was Commissioner Peters brought up the issue of how, how soon do these folks fall under sunshine, you know, and how soon are we putting them under that? In fact, having their names listed here, granted that the vote is not guaranteed, but we're starting to put them under that umbrella a little bit. So I don't know how you can select without appointing. I don't know how you, I'm not an attorney, but it seems like if you select them, we have appointed them.
If you select them, you have certainly put them on notice that they are subject to the sunshine law. My only concern really was the charter provision that says they have to meet within 30 days, but you're absolutely right. If you put out there the names of the 11 people that you absolutely intend to appoint, they will at that point be subject to the sunshine. Now, from a practical matter, all that means is they cannot talk with one another about redistricting. So I don't, I don't know how serious a limitation that is, but they, but they would be under the, the law, the sunshine law at that point.
And it is, I mean, that's fine. I don't know if these seven people know each other at all or interact with each other in their life, but if we are going to do that, I'd like to know that today so I can start reviewing the applicants for the, for open positions.
I would, I guess the only thing I would ask, I mean, I don't, what's the benefit of selecting them without a, you know, without appointing? I mean, yes, go ahead.
And forgive me, Jewel, you know, I'm just remembering back to old days and kind of what you said with sunshine law, and that was part of our discussion at the meeting, was that essentially, in a way, these folks have been identified as candidates. And when I was a candidate for office, way, way back for city commissioner in Clearwater, and when I was a candidate for being appointed to the MPO board or whatever, I was told, you can't talk to anybody. And so we're essentially, in my opinion, hamstringing a lot of people. They are candidates, and in tech, I believe they should be very careful about discussing any redistricting. And some of these are, you know, some of these are political people, so that's what I'm also concerned about.
I've just, I've just never heard as a candidate for office that you fall under sunshine. I mean, you don't know until 7:15 PM that night if you're elected. So as far as I was concerned, up until 7 o'clock, when the votes were counted, you were not under those sunshine.
I understood it the way Commissioner Seale did, that once you're a candidate, you're officially a candidate, that you have those same, so I don't, I don't know.
But I remember being a candidate for the MPO board and being told you need to not go meet with people and have discussions because, you know, it's a gray area, in my opinion.
Well, and, and I would say, when you're a candidate for the MPO board, unless you were the citizen appointment, and I do think they have those on the MPO, or at least did, you're already an elected official, and if you know that this board is going to be appointing you, you know, to the MPO, that's something, in my opinion, that's different than a citizen who's on a roster of people that may get appointed. Now, you know, certainly the seven that are identified here, you know, if you all are going to stick with these, it may be something that we want to advise them, hey, you know, you've already been identified, don't talk to each other about this topic, because that, that really is the, the primary issue that people need to be cognizant of, that are on boards that are subject to the sunshine, it's not talking to one another. Really, everything else implicated by the sunshine, staff takes care of. Notice, minutes, you know, things like that. But not talking to one another is probably the most important aspect of the sunshine law.
So what's your pleasure? Come back to this later?
It would be my preference not to select, appoint, do anything with this agenda item on Tuesday, by two cents.
Okay. I'm not, I'm, I'm kind of leaning that way as well. I'm not sure what the others are. So we, I mean, unless I hear something differently, we won't address this. So we just, the action we take here is just to, do we have to take any action on this at the meeting?
You don't need to take any action, no. What we'll do, you know, we keep, and I was just looking on the census website, they've given no additional updates other than the end of September, for, for the delivery of the data. So, you know, we continue to monitor that, and what the charter says is that within 30 days of appointment, the board must meet for an organizational meeting. So we could certainly take a look at going ahead and appointing them, maybe one of your May meetings or a June meeting, and go ahead and have that organizational meeting. I just think it would be a bit odd to have that organizational meeting way in advance of the meetings where they'll actually be conducting business. But if you start to look at the June timeframe, you're starting to get closer, because you'd be talking about July for a meeting, we're getting the, the information in September, but, you know...
We have five months, we have five months to do the, to do the work?
Well, if we really don't get the data until September 30th, we're going to have an extremely compressed timeframe.
I understand, but the most we can take is five months for that group, right?
The most you can take per the charter, that's correct, is five months. But realistically, if we get the data in September, they're going to have a month, as proposed by the consultant that we've brought under contract because of that limitation, and then this board's only going to have two months.
Right.
And I suspect that you've only got one meeting in December. So realistically, it's, for you all, it's going to be very compressed.
So we could actually officially start it in August, because that's, that would take us, the five months would take us to the end of the year.
We could.
And then we, okay.
We could. And, and keep in mind, this board, this board should be done with their action by the end of October. The redistricting board, I mean, not county commission board. Sorry.
So that gives us a month for the redistricting board?
It's going to be tight.
Or any...
Unless there's some kind of relief granted by the state, which I've not heard that that could, is even a possibility, but unless there's some kind of relief granted by the state, the redistricting needs to be done by the end of this calendar year.
Okay. Well, we're not going to bring it back for this meeting, probably targeting more like July, August, that we, we can take advantage of the full five months if we, you know, whatever. Okay.
Can, are, is there any advantage or in July, August, for us having a workshop where we look at what the process will actually be as far as, I mean, when we did this in legislature, we had software, we had, you know, lots of things like that. What the process will be as far, I haven't been on the county when we've done this, because we could start at least the framework and the discussion and some of those things. The board is advisory, it's, it's advisory, it's not going to make the decision, we're going to make the decision. So we could do some of that framework stuff in July, August, whenever, before actually having the numbers.
You could absolutely do that, and that might be something that's helpful for, for this county commission board to do.
That's what I'm thinking.
Because you have a new process this time around, even for those of you that may have been here last time, this redistricting board is new in our charter. We could certainly give you all, at least from my perspective, we could give you all a refresher on the legal principles. a refresher on the legal principles associated with redistricting, because that's certainly going to be something you all are considering. And I know that we could certainly touch base with a consultant and perhaps get him on board to do, you know, more of the logistics of it, you know, what he looks at and how he analyzes it. But we could certainly do a presentation like that for the county commission.
Again, if there's going to be a software used that, I mean, again, with the legislature, you could sit there and play with maps all day. I never did that, because it really didn't matter what I thought about maps when I was in Tallahassee. But if we have the ability to look at some of that software beforehand, so that we're not crash coursing it in October, November, that's all I'm thinking.
And Jewel, if we, if we had some, to that point, if we had some things that we wanted that group to consider, and I don't mean to tell them what to consider, but like, you know, changing, not changing lines, because that's by population and census stuff, but I'm talking about certain things were done to districts before, maybe we can ask them to consider flattening it out, you know, just can we give kind of ideas for them to consider in their deliberation?
I certainly think that's appropriate. The redistricting board is a legislative body, so anybody would be free to speak to them. You know, again, and I think one thing that might be helpful for some of you all is to hear some of those legal principles, because I think they do get at some of the issues that you're talking about, as far as some boundaries that may look, not necessarily how you would think they might, but I think it would be helpful to have a workshop, because we could go over a lot of these different issues, from the legal side, from the, you know, data, you know, analysis side, and really to go over the process that, again, would be new this time because of the change to the charter.
Okay. Okay. So if that group only gets five months, but they're going to be done by the end of October, we could, if you wanted to back that up, even August 1, that gives us time to talk and get some, I'm talking about us doing our preliminary stuff, because even then, they're not, they're only going to get two months. Even if we let them form in September 1st, they'd only have two months out of their five.
They're going to be exceptionally constrained this year because of the data. I mean, we should be getting the data, we should have had the data, I guess, earlier this month, but, you know, then we thought by the end of this, the end of this month, but it just, it continues to get pushed back. I'm hopeful that it won't be the end of September, but there's really no telling. But both the redistricting board and the county commission are going to be very constrained in their deliberations this year, without a doubt.
Yeah.
So, an advanced workshop would probably be good, because we could get some of these issues out, you could start talking about them, and again, we could go over some of the background data, because it's not, this is something that only comes up every 10 years, so I do think it would be helpful to go over some of these issues.
Okay. And if any changes, any relief of that timeframe that you said that would have to be done by the state, is that the legislature that would have to do that? And they're not even in session, so probably if they don't do anything this month to give any relief, then probably it's not coming.
Most likely.
Unless, well...
Most likely.
They start back in January, I think, this year, so next... Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I see that Brian has left, but maybe we can ask him to put this on the radar with our legislative leadership to ensure that they haven't lost track of it in their goings-on with conference that's going on right now.
I'm sorry. This, this topic, you know, if we're going to get any relief for having to be done by the end of this calendar year...
Oh, I see what you're saying. Okay.
Something that would have to happen in the legislature.
And they won't be in session, is the point.
Yeah. Okay.
We had also considered whether or not, in the current situation, perhaps the governor might be able to do something under emergency powers.
Yeah.
But I think that would largely depend on whether the state ultimately extends their state of emergency, because again, you know, we are, we all are operating under some emergency powers right now, and, you know, COVID and the pandemic is the reason why the data is being delayed.
Is that all from... Okay. Barry?
Okay, well, Steve Hayes will be here to give you a spring break update, some of the efforts that they have ongoing, and kind of an update on what they see occurring in our tourism area. Item number...
And that's where he's going to do his update. I apologize, not, not at the last item.
Put it under either item.
Yeah, that's fine.
He'll be here. So, yeah. Item number 31 is what we previously discussed, our federal legislative program, talking about our national flood insurance program, beach nourishment, transportation infrastructure, and offshore oil drilling prohibition. You just discussed item 32, and then you get to item 33 is the other items. Item number 34 is a resolution permitting a second amendment to the annual action plan for community development. Item number 35 is a rezoning, that's a request to rezone from residential mobile manufactured home to one to family and laundromat, and this was unanimously recommended, no unspoken opposition. Item number 36 is a request for establishing of a master development agreement for a planned development in Form 4 acres in Palm Harbor. This is 30 single-unit family attached townhome subdivisions proposed. There's no land use or zoning amendments within the application. Local planning agency recommended approval 7-0. One person, nobody appeared in opposition. Item number 37 is a request for a zoning change from rural residential to R3 single-family on 2.17 acres, unincorporated Largo. Staff recommendation for approval. This is when, this appeared before you before at a public hearing. Some of the neighbors indicated they wanted more time to review. The applicant didn't meet with them. It's coming back for you for presentation and decision. Item number 38 is a zoning case, single-family, it's a R3 to R5 urban residential, and a whole different series of actions here. As you can see, this is the first of two required public hearings. Local planning agency recommended approval 5 to 1. Five persons appeared in opposition. There was a petition, however, for 563 signatures in opposition, so this will again be before Item number 39 is a, oh, this is an amendment to our zoning, this is the second hearing required of the two public hearings. These are the changes that were recommended to you regarding setbacks, outdoor lighting, parking, and other staff recommendations to make our building code, our development, I'm sorry, our development code easier to navigate, and flexibility for staff to be able to move projects. Item number 40 is a finding of necessity, and this is for the Pinellas Park CRA that was previously discussed. This will expand the boundaries. And that's it?
That's all?
That's it. I can add some more items to the agenda, but...
Commissioner Seal?
Other than 37, do you expect any opposition from many of these?
That's the only one that staff made me aware of, that I'm aware of. Tom, do you know of any other opposition on the other items?
That's the only one.
That's the only one.
Thank you.
I've heard quite a bit on 38, but that's a...
Oh, you have?
I was advised by the attorney in my office at Handel D's that you could expect some commentary on 38.
Okay.
37 and 38 were the two that were flagged for me.
Okay. Commissioner, the top half?
Any, anything else from anybody?
If anybody has a burning desire to know about the sunshine law, I looked it up while I've been sitting here. Basically, what the sunshine law says is that the sunshine will apply from the moment a member is selected to be on an advisory committee. So these folks are not subject to the sunshine yet, until you select them.
Select them.
It also says that candidates for office, so for you all, well, not for you all, because you would be incumbents, but candidates are not subject to the sunshine unless they are an incumbent.
Unless they are the incumbent.
The incumbent, correct.
No, that's true. That's probably after you're elected.
Thank you for the clarity.
Yes, if you're a candidate, no. If you are a commissioner-elect, yes. But for you all, there's such a short timeframe, there's only two weeks between election and when you take, but those two weeks, you would be...
Okay, so there may be some confusion on my part. All right, anything else, anybody? All right, this meeting is adjourned.